Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. On the school board side, we have one quick administrative item to handle, which is that we joined together as a group for the tour and we went into recess, and so we need to adjourn our previous meeting so we can start our other meetings. So at this time, we can entertain a motion to adjourn our fourth or the high school tour. This is just for the school board. I think y'all already did yours. But thank you, Tony. All right, we have a motion from Ms. Solomon, a second from Ms. Arsenovic. Any discussion about that motion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we adjourn that meeting, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson to get this one started.
I'd like to welcome, everybody, to March 19th meeting, Gloucester County Board of Supervisors and the school board. Ms. Cronin, or Ms. Steel, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
All present.
All right, and I'll do the same thing on our side and call our meeting to order as well. Ms. Dayhoo, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Arsenovic.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Ms. Espinoza.
Here.
Ms. McDonough.
Here.
Ms. Solomon.
Here.
Ms. Scruggs.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
All right, now if you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by the Honorable Kevin Smith.
Let us pray. Most wise and eternal God, our Father, let us once again, God, that we call upon your most holy and everlasting name. God, we call on your name tonight just to say thank you. Thank you, God, for just allowing us to come, dear God, and to be able to discuss the business of our county, God. God, we pray, dear God, asking you right now, God, if you would just let your Holy Spirit reign in this place, God. God, we invoke your Holy Spirit right now in the name of Jesus. God, we pray, God, just asking you, dear God, to continue to watch over us, guide us, and protect us. God, we ask that you watch over our schools, dear God, and, dear God, watch over, dear God, all of our sheriff department members and rescue squad members, dear God, volunteers, God, fire departments. God, we ask you, dear God, to be with them all and keep them under the hedge of your protection, Lord. And, God, we pray, dear God, that anything that's said and done here tonight, dear God, that you will be able to get the glory, the honor, and the praise, God, for us in Jesus' name, the one who's able to keep us from falling. And all of us say amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless America.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Oh, there are no, there are no minutes. I was looking at the next line, the adoption of the agenda. Second. All in favor?
Do we need to drop the agenda, too?
Go ahead.
So, on the school, on the school board side, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Any discussion about that motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we have an agenda.
There's no consent agenda. Got it right that time. Next item was matters presented by the board. Board of Supervisors. Mr. Crisco.
Yes, I just want to, I'm really pleased with what we're seeing at the high school. We got to tour there earlier today. It's amazing what's going on in such a short time. I'm glad we're getting that done, and I look forward to the finished project when we get to that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crisco. Anyone else? I was gonna, one of the things I was gonna say was thank the school administration for the tour of the school. A lot has proceeded since the last time we were there. And to remind the public and remind board members that on Thursday at 6:00, we have a town hall meeting here in the auditorium, and it will be televised for the population, for the public. Mr. Anderson.
Any matters from school board members? All right.
Next item is county administrator superintendent items.
Don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steel.
Good evening. I do not have any items.
Goodness. Okay. Next item will be citizen comment period. If you'd come forward, state your name and magisterial district, you'll have three minutes to speak.
And special thanks to everybody on the board of supervisors and the school board for attending, and for Dr. LaDue who's attending, and those of you who are at home watching television and attending. I am going to keep this very short. I want to make some comments about the budget, which you're going to discuss today, the school budget. And my view on that is that the budget, like the one the year before, is cut down to the bone. It is very reasonable, and I made that comment at the school board meeting. Dr. LaDue did a great job of cutting out everything but the muscle, and it would be a shame if there were to be superficial discussions to lower the school's budget. There are two surprises. One is the health costs. I'm sure even the county administrator is surprised at health cost uprisings. The other is the salaries at the teachers. The salaries of the teachers will need to go up, not only at Gloucester County, but if any of you read the Wall Street Journal article this week on teaching, using Virginia as an example state, the north of Virginia is going up almost 9%. That means that other places beyond northern Virginia are looking for less than nine, but more than five. We've got to be competitive here. We've got a new superintendent who is doing a bang-up job, and he needs to have the best teachers that are available. And you can make that happen if you adopt the budget that he will propose tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the boards. My name is Teresa Altimus, and I reside in the Gloucester Point District. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the appropriation resolution in your packet. First and foremost, this is the latest material that I got off the website at 5:00 PM tonight. There is absolutely no supporting documentation to this resolution. I don't know how many of you read it or not, but there's actually, I see it's in draft form, but there's a former member of the board of supervisors' name on this resolution. So even if you consider this, you would have to do those changes. But very quickly, let me point out some things that draw some concern to not only myself, but I'm sure other people, that if they took the time to read it, will understand it. This is a one-time pass/fail resolution. If you look in the first paragraph where it says, "Therefore it be resolved," it says that you, the board of supervisors, basically are saying that any unspent appropriations up to $500,000 in the school operating fund at the any, at the end of any fiscal year to be recorded as reserve fund balance within that fund for the purposes of funding in the next fiscal year in the school capital fund or other non-reoccurring essential criterion, critical needs of the school division. Mr. Wilmot's behind me, but if memory serves me correctly, and I can fail at my memory, I'm not sure that you can appropriate for continually fiscal years down the road. There's no sunset date to this. I'm not opposed, and let me be crystal clear, because I don't want anybody to misunderstand me. I'm not opposed to capital funding in the school system. What I am opposed to is a credit card that has million-dollar limit on it and no fiscal responsibilities. With all due respect to the members of the school board, where is your policy or criteria, your definition of what a non-reoccurring essential or critical need is? I'm not saying that you don't have them, but I think that if you ask for up to a half a million dollars, which is a penny on the real estate, almost a penny, on the real estate, then you should have a policy in place to select these reoccurring or critical needs. There is no list, like I said, no responsibility of explanation. It's almost like putting a king-size blanket on a twin bed. You cover anything and everything you want without the responsibility. You owe the taxpayers of this county at least an explanation of what you plan to do with it. There's no reason why you can't come back and ask for it from one fiscal year to the next. It's all, it's all, that's all, it's as simple as that. And I know that you do have the needs. The last thing that I would say is, and you all are elected, you're responsible to the citizens and the taxpayers' money. I know this item is on the agenda. I would respectfully request that both boards at least ask these questions and put a policy in place before you pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Altimus. Would anyone else like to come speak? Ms. Cronin, do we have any?
Do we have any called-in comments? I'm not sure we gave the opportunity through ours. It was just through the board of supervisors, correct? I can't see.
We didn't have the opportunity on our side.
Perfect.
Okay. We'll move to the next item, which is a resolution to authorize grant applications for the Virginia opioid abatement authority's regional individual grant programs. Mr. Wright.
Yes, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, and gentlemen of the board of supervisors, for this opportunity to address you this evening. The purpose of this presentation is to briefly discuss the proposed, oh, thank you, cooperative and individual opioid settlement fund grant applications, as well as provide an update regarding the project plan that the board of supervisors approved on September 5th. So just as a reminder of the settlement itself, in '21, 2021, there was a $26 billion settlement with Janssen, as well as several of their distributors, to provide opioid settlement funds to enhance services to individuals and families dealing with addiction. So that funding is going to be available between 2022 and 2039. Recently, there was an additional settlement penned with the retail distributors, Walmart, CBS, et cetera, for another $20 billion that will be allocated over the next 12 years. So we have a lot of funding that we can work with in terms of helping people cope with addiction. So this is a pretty busy slide. I wanted to point you specifically to the column that says "from OAA," and then the 25% incentive, because that's relevant to one of the two resolutions tonight. So the individual funding, that is money that has been set aside by the opioid abatement authority specifically for individual localities. We still have to request it, and the OAA needs to see that we're utilizing those funds for evidence-based or evidence-informed practices. So again, those are things we have to specifically request through an application process. And then that column that says 25% incentive, essentially what that is, as long as we agree to use those funds, again, for evidence-based or evidence-informed practices, the OAA will give us an additional 25% on top of our individual distribution to do the good work we're trying to do. So that's what's encompassed in one of the resolutions this evening. So just as a reminder, on September 5th of this year, or last year, the board of supervisors approved this plan for Gloucester. This is the plan we have for the first two years. Essentially, we're in kind of a pilot process. As we all know, the county, we are not addiction services providers, so we had to utilize the community, utilize our subject matter experts and therapeutic providers in the community to help us better understand how we should utilize the funding. So what we discerned was these were the top five initiatives that we wanted to look at for the first two years. And one that I'll talk about a little more in terms of an update is the school-based prevention and treatment specialist. And I'll give you an update in terms of the benefit and impact that that role and the individual in that role has already been having. It's been outstanding. Other things included supplementing peer support programming through mobile integrated health with our fire and EMS providers, marketing, available regional programming. One of the things we saw in our communication with the various stakeholders across the community is that there is no one good source of information for people who are struggling with addiction regarding the services that they can ultimately access. So we're working internally with our community engagement group to come up with a comprehensive but attractive resource guide, and then ultimately a website related to that, so people can have that one-stop-shop in terms of where can I go, what services are available in the community. And then increasing access to medication-assisted treatment through expanded transportation options. We actually recently penned a memorandum of agreement with Bay Transit to create a specialized transportation service specifically for folks who are either getting medication-assisted treatment or receiving therapeutic counseling. So they can call, and they can get picked up at their home, taken to their appointment, that individual will wait for them, and then take them home after it. So that eliminates one of the principal barriers to getting assistance. And then finally, we also wanted to help people who are currently in medication-assisted treatment, so we're subsidizing a relatively small number of clients with their daily dosing to help keep them engaged and involved in their treatment. So those are the five that we looked at. In terms of the prevention and treatment specialist itself, this individual, who is a CSB employee but is housed within GHS, has been working with their counseling staff and has already, to date, presented prevention programming to 209th graders. And then they'll be working with another 210th graders in early April. An even bigger win for this is they have already had 11 referred youth receiving assistance with substance issues. 10 of those are currently active and receiving therapeutic services. What's really exciting about this is they already see the credibility and the impact of this, so several of the youth who are receiving services have referred their fellow youth for help. So the word is getting out there, and they've already been able to do really great things with this. And keep in mind, this is really only been on the ground for two and a half months. So to have 10 youth who are already actively getting services and help is fantastic. So this segues into the next part of this, which is to talk a little bit more about the grant applications themselves. But basically, with this settlement, there's four different ways we can get funding. There's the direct distribution, which comes straight from the settlement administrators to the individual localities. So we've already received that funding, and we'll receive that directly over the next 18 years. Then there's the set-aside funding, which is the individual distribution funding that I talked about. Another one is the cooperative grant funding, which this requires at least two localities to come together and plan for a specific project. So that's another resolution that we have on the agenda for this evening. And then finally, for those entities, those institutions and organizations that have never done this work before, like Gloucester County, there's actually planning grant funding available as well, so they can look at, you know, what are the ways we can use this funding? So those are the four funding streams. So now, switching quickly to the grants for this evening, the first one I want to talk about is the cooperative grant request, and this is an application that is being submitted collectively by Gloucester, Northumberland, Richmond, and Westmoreland Counties. And it's being submitted on behalf of the Northern Neck Regional Jail. They currently have medication-assisted treatment services in place, but it is woefully inadequate for the need that exists within the jail. So they want to expand that to serve up to 200 inmates per year with medication-assisted treatment and therapeutic counseling. Because again, most of the individuals who come in who have substance use issues also have co-occurring disorders, mental health issues as well. So that grant is being written for 240, just over 247,000 per year for up to five years. And Gloucester is actually intending, with the board's approval, to include $20,000 in our matching direct distribution funds, which will ultimately enhance the likelihood of the grant award. So that resolution is included on page four of your packet. The other resolution is our individual locality grant request. One of the really strategic things that the OAA, the opioid abatement authority, did, recognizing that a lot of the organizations had no experience in this, they're actually holding our individual distributions for the first two years, automatically, holding us harmless for that. And then, beginning with FY '25, we have to start pooling down our funds, or they'll redistribute them elsewhere. So what we're going to do, we're, I am requesting through this application, the entire dedicated funding for '23, '24, and '25 totaling $72,146. And this funding will be used for the following three projects I discussed earlier. So continuing to partially fund that prevention and treatment specialist, with the other half being funded by the CSB through a Department of Juvenile Justice grant, continuing the subsidized treatment transportation, as well as continuing the medication-assisted treatment subsidization. And that resolution is found on page six of your packet. So that is my presentation, and then I will turn it over to the board for consideration of those resolutions. Yes, sir.
On your presentation, you talk about Gloucester High School. Do we have anything, or is there any plan to put it in the middle schools for support for children who may be exposed to parents that may have some issues, helping them not to get down that road?
Yeah, absolutely, sir. That's a great question. The intent at this point, for this year at least, is just to do the prevention programming for the high school specifically, and to build that capacity. But next year, the prevention and treatment specialist is already planning to go into the sixth and eighth grades as well with the prevention programming. And then, of course, the therapeutic counseling services will be available to families and youth of the middle school as well.
So there are support for the parents of the high school students as well?
Yes.
So it's a group package then?
Yes, absolutely. And the model they're using is a best-practice family, holistic family model. So they reach out to the families, offer to bring them in for group counseling as well. So yeah, it's going to involve the families.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Bizani.
So I understand this is more a reactive program than supposed to a proactive program. What is the preventative counselor doing to ask, to see where these drugs are coming from into the high school? Is there, some of these funds are going to be used to investigate and work in conjunction with the sheriff's department to find out who's the dealer here, providing these kids these drugs that are coming into the high school?
I mean, certainly when the counselor is meeting with the youth, she's trying to get that information. For various reasons, they're a little hesitant to share. But certainly, any information she gets, as a mandated reporter, she needs to share that with law enforcement. But there is no specific focused intent or plan to work actively with law enforcement on this. It's not baked into it, but it's certainly a component that would be part of it if the circumstances and need arose.
Dr. Ward.
Thanks, Mr. Wright. So this is for partial support, correct?
Correct. For the prevention and treatment specialist, yes.
So this is not a full-time person? This is someone that is here part-time?
No, this is a full-time person. The other half of the position, the other 50%, is paid for through a CSB grant that they got through the Department of Juvenile Justice.
And the individual that was hired went through a hiring process to select the correct individual? Did you have any people apply for it?
I'm not certain. Do you know, Dr. LaDue?
I do not have that information with me, but I know we had a rigorous process, because there were several candidates, and it was a collaborative process where both the school and the county worked together through the interview process.
And I could certainly reach out to the CSB and get a sense of that.
And that person's here in the high school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McDonough.
This individual, this, the prevention and treatment specialist, is he or she a certified substance abuse counselor? What's their accreditation?
Yeah, they are a certified substance abuse counselor, bachelor's level, but they've also gone through a number of other trainings since they've been here, but they are a certified substance use counselor.
Okay, we have two resolutions. The first on page four, like Mr. Wright said, that's the resolution to authorize the application for the Virginia opioid abatement authority cooperative partnership grant.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Ms. Steel, will you call the roll?
Dr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution is on page six of our packet. That's a...
So move, Ms. Steel.
Second.
You don't want to know what it is. Ms. Steel.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you to both boards.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next item was the presentation of the proposed, no, excuse me, it's capital improvement plans. Mr. LaDue.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. At this time, I'm going to call Deputy Superintendent Mr. Brian Hartley up to give his presentation on the capital improvements plan.
Hey, good evening. Are they pulling back up? It's coming back up. Mr. Stevens, can you pull the PowerPoint back up? Yep. Should be a slide deck.
Okay, as Mr. Stevens is working on that, I'll just kind of start with a couple of comments. I've gotten some feedback, more specific on the long-range capital side of things about HVAC projects, in particular Body Titan Elementary School, but a couple of things to go over with that, but would certainly be happy to answer any questions about our long-range capital plan. As you can see, there's quite a few other items on that summary sheet. So for starters, HVAC equipment, again, it's not specific to Body Titan. We, what we had to do is go in and really prioritize our list of where we assign projects, and that's really based on age. I have some numbers from ASHRAI that have a recommendation of anywhere from 15 to 17 years on our HVAC equipment, depending on the kind of units they are, compressors, the number of hours they're on them, and things like that. Body Titan Elementary in particular has units on it up for, or recommended for replacement. Some of them are as old as 1993. The others set, they're up for recommendation, are from 1995. I believe the replacement year, and we'll pull it up in just a moment, replacement year from ASHRAI recommendation was 2020 at Body Titan Elementary School. Now, with that said, I will say, we have a preventive maintenance contract with Honeywell, who are on-site every day. They take care of our fans, our belts, cleaning condensers, and things like that. If we were to, in any one of these units, have a significant issue, like a leak in the coil, that is not something that we are capable of addressing in a unit from 2005, and certainly not one from 1993. Under our preventive maintenance contract, a lot of things are covered. There are some things that just no mechanical company will cover under a plan like that, such as a heat exchanger. We had actually one that went out in a facilities building just this past week. So very, very hard to get, and you can get them, very expensive. And again, once you get past that 15 to 17 years, and certainly past 20 years, fine parts for these rooftop units becomes extremely difficult. So with that said, the implications for equipment, and again, I made reference to other buildings. Body Titan probably has the oldest equipment. Achilles is really not too far behind them. Avenue is also close up on the list. So a unit could go down at any point in time at any of those buildings. It could go down at any building, but those three buildings in particular would be ones that we'd pay attention to. The issue that we're facing now is lead time on equipment, and it ranges quite a bit, but depending on the size of the unit and really its functionality or... depending on the size of the unit and really its functionality, or how it plays into our system, it could be anywhere from sixteen to twenty-four weeks. So if we lose a, a unit, a fifty-ton unit like we looked at earlier, that runs, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen classrooms, and it goes out in December, it could be June before we get that replaced. Unfortunately, the way these things work, and y'all saw how massive these units were this afternoon, to bring in like portable or temporary H vac to these systems, we just do not have the electrical infrastructure or the equipment to, to handle something like that. So as far as the contingency plan, we would certainly lean on our colleagues that we worked with on the mechanical side of things to help support that, but we would have to definitely have some sort of backup plan because we have such a long lead time. With that said, if we can go to the next slide, I told you we had some ASHRAE recommendations, and you can see what we're up against, and I didn't age out the equipment. Again, Body Tide equipment, Body Tide has the oldest equipment now that we're replacing stuff at the high school, some as old as nineteen ninety-three, but you can see that Achilles and Abboten are up there. Petsworth needs a little bit of work. They had a lot of work done about a decade ago, but there's still control work to be done. And then I mentioned the unit that's in the back that just lost its heat exchangers past week. So with that said, I will stop and see if there's any questions specific to H vac, and then we can pull up our summary slide for the long-range capital plan and see if there's any questions about that. Just to address one area of costs, why, why people are thinking about potential questions, you see a number, well, I put these on, see that. You see a number up there, one point eight seven million for Abboten. That's the quote we got in the fall, the fall before, it was one point seven. So you can tell how quickly these costs go up.
Mr. Hartley?
Mr.
Is it possible to get a copy of this email to us after tonight?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartley, any of the A C units, H V A C units coming off of the high school that are older, do they have any of the parts that we can use at any of the other schools?
We could certainly ask. I, it really depends on the size of them, the, the manufacturer of them, how much age they have on them. You know, we have some pretty big units that were taken off of D Hall at the high school that are functional, but they're from nineteen ninety-three. So even parts pulling out might not be compatible with some of our newer equipment.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at scrap, I normally look at it as just getting rid of it, but since it's having difficulties getting some parts, we might wanna look at it that way.
We can certainly work and with our, through our P M contract and see if there's anything we can pull off other parts. I know, again, we, we do everything we can to make, make things work. We had a heat exchanger that went out in the library, again, a very old system. You couldn't get a heat exchanger, but fortunately, we had heat on either side or on three sides of the library at the high school this past winter, so we're able to keep it fairly comfortable. We did bring in, you know, a, a larger industrial hanging heater to help out, but, you know, we, we do what we can to make it work, but, you know, one unit going down at one school is, is one thing to get through, but you have four or five units from nineteen ninety-three, and they all go down within a short period of time, we would have some significant challenges.
Thank you.
Could I, just to echo, or could I?
Yeah.
Okay. Second follow-up on that, that you're talking about salvaging good working parts from them and maybe storing them, or is there a market for them even?
So there might be a market for some things. I know we talked about the chiller system at Gloucester High School, which is being replaced with the rooftop units that we have. The chiller system might have some life left in it, and we've actually worked with Honeywell already to see if there's some smaller divisions that might benefit it, benefit from having a chiller system. They're, they're pretty expensive, some systems, you know, well, every system I think would struggle with, you know, finding funds for things like this. But if somebody loses the chiller system, which is one of the reasons we went away from that system, they'd be kind of in a world of hurt, so to speak, and would need to get something as quickly as possible. But Honeywell would certainly reach out to other divisions and see if there's something they could use.
Price that you have here, where I see Body Tide, under one million three ninety-nine, is that two thousand twenty price?
That is the price we got in the fall of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, and I, you know, when I, when I first started working with long-range capital, people would hold numbers for anywhere from three to six months. They won't hold them for more than probably sixty to ninety days anymore. Not to jump too far ahead, but school buses are another primary example that are in our long-range capital plan. You know, the fall of twenty-two, we had a price about, I think, a hundred and twenty thousand on average for a bus, and they were probably a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty by the time the spring rolled around.
All right.
All right, I'll have Mr. Stevens pull up the long-range capital plan summary, and I'll just see if there are any questions, and while people are taking the opportunity to, to look over that, we mentioned to the school board and through some discussions that there are school construction dollars that came from the state that we're using for some of these things. So the lockset replacement is in process, the sidewalk projects are, are in process, and there's some work at the sports complex at the high school that we're able to, to do because the weight room actually qualifies as a classroom.
I can't see what's the sidewalk project cost?
Uh, it was a total of two seventy-one was the estimate. We actually got a, a lesser quote for that, but we're pulling that off of the, this was approved in the fall from the school board. That will actually come off our long-range capital because we're able to do that work with state construction dollars. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
And we'll send over that information about the ASHRAE recommendations.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I could...
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah. Mr. Hartley, first of all, I just wanted to thank the school administration for the tour and for your, your guidance, and as well as Mr. Records who, who led the tour. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if this is gonna be addressed at a later point in our meeting, but I think one of the successes of the school board and the Board of Supervisors working together has been on our emphasis on school security. And we have made great strides in ensuring that we have S, uh, school resource officers, armed police officers designated for each school, we have school security officers. And while I mention them, I have to credit the school security officers in the back and the ones I see every day at Gloucester High School. They do an outstanding job, rain or shine, amidst traffic of parents and students who are urgently trying to get where they're going, and so I just, I really wanna commend them because I see the excellence in what they put into their job every day. But to, to, for future planning for the, for the high school, we had previously seen a prototype of the weapons detection...
Yes, sir.
...system. And as I understand it, they have various lanes, and each lane would cost approximately one hundred thousand dollars. And they're very sophisticated systems, but they, they require less personnel, which is a, a good thing. I, I know, if, if my memory serves, we, there was an allocation of three hundred thousand dollars for school security that hasn't been spent yet. What are the plans or recommendations of this administration and the school board for implementation of this weapons detection program? And what, what is your, what do you need from the Board of Supervisors to make this happen? Thank you.
Just a number?
[laughing]
No, actually, we, we had talked about this at, at last week's budget work session, and actually, even before that discussion, we had started to purchase some additional metal detectors, particularly for our secondary schools, because we're seeing them used more and more, and obviously, when we have larger events out at the football stadium, for example, whether it's a football game or graduation, to try to get thousands of people through a metal detector or two metal detectors out there is, is pretty difficult. So we have to switch to kind of an alternating mode where we have some people coming through a walkthrough detector, other people's get, other people getting wanded. If you get alerted, then you get a whole nother process. So hopefully, additional metal detectors will help in the meantime. The board has actually asked me and my team to come back with some additional information or presentation, if you will. So what we did was actually, we reached out to Mid-Atlantic, that does a lot of security work for us, trying to schedule a meeting with them, so then we can involve some other team members, which would probably most likely include, you know, administrators from different levels, resource officers from different levels, security officers from different levels, so we can get, we can get some sort of presentation together. I'm stopping a little short of saying recommendation because I, I don't have a training in security, but we get exposed to all these other things that you have mentioned that we, we have implemented and are, are good things to do. But we don't wanna lose sight of some of the procedure, the procedures that are in place, because in many cases, and I won't cite them this evening, you know, a, a locked door is just as important as a metal detector. A, you know, a good lockdown procedure is just as important as a security vestable. So all the things have to work hand in hand. But to get to your question, the weapon detection devices are certainly impressive. We had those demonstrations last year. I know you were, you were present for them. They are designed to detect significant weapons of destruction is what they're designed to pick up on. They are expensive, the technology improves every year. Part of our questions with Mid-Atlantic when we set this meeting up will be, you know, are we better off at a purchase? Are we better off at a lease? Are we better off using just straight up metal detectors as a deterrent? Because again, metal detectors are a whole lot less expensive, but they're very effective at detecting metal. It decreases your efficiency of getting into a building significantly, but we need to kinda find that balance of what we wanna do. But last year, we did have a quote regards of what direction we went, about a hundred thousand dollars a lane to, to implement weapon detection systems. We had a little bit of discussion earlier that, you know, you might be able to do one lane at the security vestable at the high school, and then two lanes where buses offload and kids that drive are coming into the building. When we saw a dual-lane system at one of the high schools we went to, they got about twelve or thirteen hundred kids in the building in probably about seventeen minutes. So much more efficient, but to put, you know, two, two to four lanes at every school in a division would have a total cost of about one point six million based on the quotes that we got last year.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could follow up. So based on a recommendation of two lanes at each entryway, we're talking four hundred thousand dollars at the high school, and then, then it could grow from there and the other schools.
It could.
So, of, of course, it would be wonderful. We had one point six million dollars to invest to, to cover all of these schools, but I, I, I know, I'm probably speaking for everybody here, safety is for our, our staff and our students and teachers has, has got to be the number one priority with all of the tragedies we've seen across the country. And so I think if we can start wherever we can start to get these systems in place as soon as possible, that would be, I, I know everyone would share in that opinion. Thank you.
Right, absolutely. Thank you. And again, just another nod to our, our, our relationship with law enforcement in Gloucester County. I think we're in a, a very good spot with our sheriff's office, and then we've been very fortunate with the grants and the hires we made on the school security side. I think y'all were able to witness one of our school security officers working the blockade to kinda alleviate that traffic concern that we had with events going on in the back of Gloucester High School this afternoon.
Mr. Bizani?
Mr. Hartley, thank you for your presentation. I'm just curious, does the school system have a high intervention of potential individuals bringing something into the school system? Do you have a high significant number of incidences like this, given your current processes? Something you can answer publicly?
I, I guess not, not necessarily knowing what your definition of high is and mine is, I mean, we...
Well, not high, just incidences, encounters, you know, like we do at the southern border, is an encounter for every person. Is there an encounter in the school system where you have an individual that has contraband on them?
Not frequently.
Okay.
If I could add, we are required to report anything and be as transparent as possible. We know we communicate that information to parents, and the Virginia Department of Education tracks that data. And so, again, we don't have the specific, specific numbers in front of you, but we do not have an abnormal or a high number of those. Nevertheless, we have to stay vigilant and stay on it. A conversation about security is very much different than a conversation about instruction. So those conversations are happening.
And those, just to add to Dr. Vlade's comments, those things that we're required to report are included in our monthly discipline report for the school board, so we'd be happy to share that as well.
Dr. Orth?
How, how mobile are these systems? So that, you know, if you had these two runways for the high school in the building, could they move to the football field for Friday night football?
So excellent question, and actually, that question is really what prompted us to look at a second manufacturer. We started with Evolve. It was the first presentation we had in some really, again, impressive technology, but then they started talking about distance requirements to other, like movable metal objects, doors, and that was a concern, so we looked at something that might have less of that distance requirement, and we ended up with OpenGate, which was the second demonstration that we had. But the OpenGate towers actually don't have to be plugged in, they run on like twenty-volt Milwaukee batteries, and even with their battery packs, they last for hours and hours and only weigh like twenty-five pounds. They can be picked up and carried out, and you don't have to worry so much with the calibration on them. Again, the, the companies will tout how much better they are than the other one and what the problems are with the other ones, but it seems like the OpenGate system, about the same cost as Evolve, but would seem like they'd move a whole lot easier.
Just as a side, a lot of airports now have dogs running through, you know, searching for things. Is there any thought about, you know, hiring dogs? I know we have, the police department has one, a K nine, but is that something that could potentially be used that could help in security?
Uh, we've not explored that to any great extent. I don't know if our, our sheriff's office has any K nines capable. Actually, we have K nine in the back, K my expert in the back, but I will not put him on the spot, but I, I don't know if they, we have that capability locally, but we can look into it. We do.
Leaving courtroom report, and it was interesting, they had all the people going through, having dogs checking them rather than going through the, the sensors. And they had two lines, basically dogs checking everything, and that was it. The sensor was just the dogs.
Hmm.
Is, is not everybody...
Yeah, I mean, certainly it'd be worth some additional dialogue. I, I know that we, when we used to bring in, like, you know, the drug sniffing dogs into buildings, we had to be very careful about our exposure to children, to the K nines, really from a search parameter more so than any sort of safety parameter. But, yeah, we can certainly have conversations and look into it.
Mr. Drew?
For nothing else for big events like graduation and football games.
So, um, one of the things that I've always pointed out about discipline is you gotta have buy-in. We can throw money at anything, and money's not gonna buy you a fixed product. It's buy-in from the community, it's buy-in from the parents, it's buy-in from the kids. Security is a twenty-four-hour, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days topic. If it's taught in school, taught at home, and we, we talk about it, we've got to get kids to buy into it. It's complacency is a killer, and anybody in law enforcement and the military will tell you that. People get complacent, and, and it's just human nature. We have to get buy-in from everybody to be conscious all the time, and then that's just gonna enhance any kind of safety features we put into the schools. Because if kids are looking out for each other, and parents are looking out for other kids, and the parents are looking out for other, the staff and so on and so forth, very few, and we're gonna, we're gonna, I think, be at the top of the, of the game. And I'm on the disciplinary board, and we have very few to answer any of that, is very few incidences where weapons or stuff like that comes, it's very few.
Can I just add?
All right, absolutely.
I understand that our incidence may be low, however, without these things in place, all it takes is one person. So I just wanna make sure that that's clear across both boards.
Right. Anyone else?
Actually, I think complacency, complacency is interesting, because I've gotten to know a TSA officer really well. a TSA officer really well, and that person said, how many guns go through that they catch? So yeah, you're right, there are a lot of people that just ignore that or just don't pay attention. And it's a significant find if they catch you with a gun, you know, going through, but you're right, and it's something that we have to be really careful about.
All right, thank you.
All right.
May I make one more comment?
Yes.
Being on the disciplinary board, not one incident did any of our kids come as a threat to the school. And I want to make that clear. It was, someone, I forgot, it was just a mistake. That can happen to anybody. It's just a mistake, and we haven't had a threat. And that's different than forgetting something. So we have to look at that as well. Like I said, you can throw money at everything, and I'm 100% behind having the technology that you can still be complacent when something happens. So, and not one child is worth, not one alive is worth being complacent. Period.
Thank you. All right, next item is the presentation of the school. Next item is the presentation of the school board's proposed fiscal year '25 budget and fiscal year '25 '29 capital improvement plan. Mr. Anderson.
I'll have a lot to say until we get to the discussion, so I'll just turn it over to Dr. Vladeau and his team with a special thanks for putting this together for us tonight. And I look forward to the discussion as we get towards the end.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Smith, Ms. Arsenovic, members of both boards, Ms. Steele, county staff, executive staff, those that are here with us tonight and those at home. I think I covered everyone. Before I get, yeah, county.
Okay.
Ted, Mr. Wilmont, thank you for coming. I, one of the things I appreciate, and before I get started, I do want to share some comments, is just the positive and cooperative relationship I inherited because I'm new here. It's my seven month between the county and the board of supervisor. And I think, Mr. Gibson, your comments about having an armed officer at every school, that's special and that's unique. I mean, we're one of the high school, few high schools, or two SROs in the state, and I couldn't appreciate their work anymore because we talk about feedback. That feedback flows back and forth between our school security, school board office staff, and you see that work. You see it in the road every day. You see it in monitoring student trafficking and out of the building. But again, that work continues. And I got to tell you, in regards, just want to comment on that security aspect. It's about intel. We want to make sure we maintain those relationships and our staff members building those relationships with students, and that is really very, very helpful. I also want to say I'm very grateful for the relationship with the county administrator, Ms. Steele. She's been extremely supportive through this process, and we meet regularly. And we discuss both the needs of the school division and the largest needs. We know in years of limited funding, it's important for us to collaborate to raise our students together with our parents and the county and the schools working together. And I feel very, very happy that we have those relationships and folks deeply care about where the division is going and the health and welfare of our students and their families. You know, on this, we could talk a budget until the cows come home. A lot of questions, you may want to see, well, how many teachers are we allotted? How many special education? How many at this school? How many at that school? If you click on, and we're not going to do it here, but it's there and it's going to be posted for the public, the budget handbook includes all that detail. If you want to be an expert on school finance, read that. It will tell you every single thing, every single position and how that money is spent. And once the budget gets approved, we're going to update the handbook, and then that information is going to be out there. So now I want to go share some information with you, which is going to inform our discussion tonight. I mean, the reason educators wake up in the morning, and you may be related to teachers, and you may have teachers in your family, is to teach kids and to keep them safe. We're to keep them safe and to teach them. And that's at the core of our mission. And it's very, very important as we talk about resources that we keep, to maintain the main thing. Our vision is really to educate all. It doesn't matter where a student comes from and what they do. Our goal is to reach all of them because they're our neighbors. They'll be our citizens. And so it's so much better to catch it early and to educate everyone and turn over every stone. And that's our vision, that we reach every single child. And I know that sounds like a cliche, but it's not. That's where the passion of educators come in, and that's our vision statement. And I stare for the public to read. I want to share with you some wonderful things that I'd be remiss not to share, the good news and what's happening in Gloucester County public schools. As we look at, you know, standardized test data, we're better than 71% of school divisions in the state, and that's the hugest achievement. Are we perfect? No, but we're working and we're getting better. Third grade reading, that's important because third grade predicts a lot of things in life. And we're in the top 20. I'm really proud of our mathematics team, top 5% of Virginia for third grade math. Mathematics instruction is off the charts, and you may have seen some of my tweets, some of the posts on Facebook. I mean, students are talking about math. They're loving math, and oftentimes they say, math is my favorite subject. If you remember those days 10 years ago, that wasn't the case. Top 18th in Virginia for eighth grade math and 12% of Virginia for, again, fifth grade math. Here's a little statistic that speaks to the service of this county. I think all of us need to take credit for that. We're second in the state for the number, well, percentage actually, of students who joined the military. And that is the service to country and service above self. That's important, and we have a very selfless community. I am so proud to be a part of that. Graduation, top 10 in Virginia for Hispanic graduation. And I already shared about the importance of safety, that we have them at SRO at every school. And again, I want to thank Sheriff Warren because he staffed our schools, and that takes a lot of effort. There is a shortage of law enforcement. And we, our schools are staffed, and I want to thank the sheriff, Sheriff Warren for making that a priority. I'm very, very proud that we have 91 sports clubs and activities, and that number is growing. And then an amazing, if you haven't seen other amazing CTE programs, when I polled our students about, you know, get some feedback from them, several students, they say they come to school because of those programs. They come to schools because of automotive. They come to school because of the construction and the carpentry program, culinary yards, a lot of cooking going on there, and, you know, and they actually make lunches for teachers for $7, of course. So that goes back into the program. So I'm very, very proud of the work. We're not going to rest on our laurels, but it takes money to make this happen. I'm very grateful. So mission and mandates, simple, got to keep it simple. Do what's best for students. Align it with the mission and the vision which I share. Look at the priorities. We know safety is number one. We have mandates and legal requirements. And then, I mean, it's a never ending, it's an entire book, just on 22.1 title, which is on education. And we did evaluate every position and every line item as part of the budget process. So I did want to share some information with you. We know, we have some comments about the teacher shortage. So back in 2013, this was projected from the Department of Education. All of this came through. We have a high number, a large number. We're very grateful for career switchers, provisional licenses, but it takes a lot of work on the organization because now, rather than teaching college providing that education, the school division, we have to do that to OGT, and we're very, very grateful for our staffing numbers. However, we have to remain competitive because there are a lot of opportunities outside of teaching and fewer and fewer individuals are going into teaching. Actually, the ACT used to have almost 40%, 20 years ago, report that they're going into teaching on their questionnaire. Less than 10% are reporting that they're going into teaching professions for now, or at least as of last year. So it's important that we focus on that, and compensation and working conditions are a huge part of that. So I wanted to share with you the J-Lark. I know you're familiar with a bipartisan group here when they look at why do teachers leave? So we have a supply issue, but we also have an exit issue. And number one reason, inadequate support for teachers, high workload, school leadership ineffective and inadequate salary. You know that the salary is fourth on the list, but it's important. Working conditions are extremely important as well, and the number one, two, and three are related to working conditions, and we are working on that. So you might want to know what the market looks like. So Region 2 is 1.1 miles from Region 3, across the water and across a bridge. About 50% of our staff actually travel to Gloucester. And so that's why we have to remain competitive because Region 2 has the highest vacancy in the states. So we're competing not only with the Nord Neck, we're competing with folks, York County, WJCC, Newport News, all of that is within driving distance. We're very, very accessible. So we're comparing notes all the time about compensation and working conditions because we are sort of splitting that region, but we're more closely related to Region 2 sometimes due to that population size. So you're looking at a vacancy rate in Region 3 of 7.62%. And that means, take about 100 teachers in your class. Let's say in a school, you have Gloucester High 100, that means we don't have eight teachers in those classes, and you have long-term subs. And think about where those teachers could be and the instruction that students would miss. That is significant and impactful. And think about your own kids being in those classes without a qualified teachers. That's so important to focus on, on teaching working conditions as well as compensation. So I want to share with you the good work that's been done before me. It took a lot of collaborative work probably at this meeting, many, many years before, every year, having hard conversations and limited resources. I want to commend, you know, my predecessors and you on getting this done. But the work doesn't stop here because while we got ahead, so are our neighbors. So you never really, you know, you want to catch up, but just when you think you caught up, then somebody else, you know, gets ahead of us. So I want to share with you another chart here. We're looking at average daily membership trend back from 2015 to our projected 2025 of 4,800. So that's what the budget is built on. And that's a conservative number because we sort of don't want to overestimate, but we don't want to underestimate as well because it's related to funding. And so the budget is built on 4,800 students. Now, when we look at the estimated county population, this graph is a little skewed due to the scale on the right, left side. However, the county population is increasing. So we have an increasing population while we have a steady or slightly declining student enrollment. And I'll share some more comments about that, getting to the bottom of that. Some of those students were lost to homeschool instruction. And there's a lot of trans latency between public schools and homeschooling, and we're trying to get more information because not only is affecting the, you know, we know that just like public education varies, so does homeschooling. And we want to make sure that as students are going between homeschooling and back into public education, and between homeschooling and back into public education, that our students transitioned and they have those, you know, good instruction because at the end of the day, if we get a 10th grader that comes in as a homeschool student, we've got to catch them up. So it's important that we monitor those numbers and get more information on what is happening to those trends. So when we're looking at some other factors affecting the budget and recommendations is that back in 2019, oh, actually, 2019, our transportation budget was approximately $420,000, right? So we dropped significantly over, over that period of time to almost a half. And so what happens with that? You're thinking about the cost of parts. And so, you know, to drop a budget, which was needed to focus on compensation and other factors, now this has become, you know, an area that is a high, you know, high concern or at least high attention. And I'll share more information about transportation in the coming slides. So, you know, I like to work on cars, and please forgive me if I get too technical. If you're thinking about an EGT sensor, exhaust gas temperature, right? You've got to have those on diesel so you don't melt pistons. And, you know, they're all computerized now, from 73 to 147. Oh, you're looking at double, right? Relays? Think about all the lights on the bus. Those are all run by relays. So those relays, again, doubled. Brakes are important because buses stop a lot. There are not a lot of vehicles out there that stop. There's some, but not a lot that do a lot of stopping the way buses do. Light bulbs. You know, you're looking at doubling to sometimes tripling, and buses have a lot of light bulbs. Tires, hundreds of dollars more. Diesel fuel, clearly, and then unleaded as well, gasoline. We have some, you know, vehicles such as vans, and we have a fleet of other cars that are actually picking up small groups of students, like students that, again, are McKenna, Vento, and those kind of students that require smaller transportation. So we do use some unleaded gas. So prices have gone up, but so have eggs and just about everything else. And we're asking, why does it take more to educate kids today than last year with fewer kids? Because things cost more. And I don't think that, that doesn't just apply in our personal lives, it actually applies to educating kids. So I think, you know, this is a focus area in improving those transportation budgets. So we're looking at a reduction in maintenance. Then we also dropped almost half a million dollars there between FY '18 and '21. Some of those funds were made up with ester funds, but all of those expire at least in September this year. So we also need to focus on maintaining our buildings and keeping them in top shape. And so that's a priority as well. So one other item, as I met with 555 employees, give or take, 401 parents, and 624 students and getting feedback from parents and students, I want to share with you what their priorities were. And so, and on this, and I'll talk about discipline later, and I'll have a presentation on discipline separately. So if we could, you know, if we could ask questions now, but there's going to be an in-depth presentation on discipline, but communication facilities? And communication was in the top three for both employees and for parents. Now, students sometimes don't think about communication in that way, but that is also a priority, and I'll share with you why. So let me show you a specific example. So back on February 22nd, we had a three-quarter inch or pipe, actually it was larger than three-quarter inch because it was feeding a third of the school bust. That's about 12, 12:05. We pulled a crisis team. Ms. Decker comes in, and now can we get the students home because what's not working? The safety equipment is not working, toilets don't flush, sprinklers don't work, the kitchen is inoperable without water. So we have to arrange transportation. We also have to feed them lunch, prepare bag lunches because that's federal law. So while this planning is happening, and we have to have enough time to come back for the run, while all this planning was happening, parents are already like talking about this. So our focus is actually to take care of the crisis in front of us and have all those plans before we commute. We can't tell you we're going to get your kids home if we don't know we have the buses and the drivers because it is in the middle of the day. And so crisis communication has been a little strained simply because, and if you look historically, this item has come before these boards in the past about a public information officer or communication and public engagement officer, whatever we want to call it. But we do need help with communication, and our parents have asked for it, not only in the superintendent's entry plan, but just in this specific example. So it is related to safety communication, and it is a, it is a priority that you'll see later in the budget. So how do we fund all of this? We know that the LCI, so that is the index that comes in from the University of Virginia. You can't contest it. It's just a number that's provided to all school divisions. As the county has grown since '05, '06, so has the LCI. The higher the LCI, the higher the locality can contribute to public education. And so currently, I think we could average a .3999 to a four for, you know, the purposes of easy math, but it has gone up and is likely to continue to get. So that means that a greater burden, not much greater, but somewhat greater falls on the locality. Per pupil comparison, I know you were thinking about, well, you know, how much are we spending per pupil? If you look at a total budget and you divide it, it should come something close to this. And I'll compare it to this group. We're thinking about other school divisions in Virginia that are semi-rural, that range between 4,500 students and 5,500 students. And so that's where, that's where we fall. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. But that's, we do think we get a great value based on the results I showed with you for the money that our county is putting forward to support- the, the money that our county is putting forward to support public education. We maximize that.
Dr. Vlade.
Yes.
Is that the county's contribution or is that the budget per student?
So that's a combination of both local funds and state funds.
So it's the total budget per student?
Yes.
Thank you.
And on this slot, I broke it down by the contribution of the county. I'm sorry, I, I, it was coming. I did break it down by, you know, the proportion of the county local funds provides to state funding as compared to other similar localities. And again, in the formula, you'll have the LCI that's embedded in the formula. And again, a point of comparison, I know our citizens and you may want to compare how things are going at our neighbors. So some budget parameters, I know I'm going to cover some information, but I think this is a summary. Health insurance going up by $2 million overall. Some of those costs, you know, we're looking at the rates, we want to have a total compensation package that is competitive. Some of those costs can be passed on to employees, moderate costs, and still stay below the average for some really rich health insurance plans. Declining enrollment, I share with you, I certainly share with you the transportation budget reduction as well as maintenance. And, you know, I share with the school board, the ESTER fund sun says those are, it was $2.1 million in 24 critical positions that we were funded through temporary funds. And we're had to find a way to cover some of those responsibilities and work through those difficult decisions of position conversions, attrition, to ensure we do the right things by the employee, but also that those funds just simply expired, they went away. And not, you know, the inflation certainly, it's all over us. So I want to share this with you and the public because it's important. Before we start the budget, 85% of it, actually 86% goes to compensation and benefits. We're already tied into that. And then approximately 14% goes into everything else. So priorities, very quickly, safety, instruction, communication, transportation, maintenance, capital improvements. But none of this is possible if we don't attract and retain the top quality talent that is needed to make it all happen. So that's why you'll see competitive compensation is critically important. So now to some numbers, the moment we've been waiting for. So as I check to our colleagues and look at the state, what it looks like is an average increase, competitive increase is 3%. And that's what we are recommending. And that includes a step plus a market adjustment for a total of 3%. That is for all positions, all position within Gloucester County Public Schools. And so we're looking at, that's 1.651. Health insurance, we're looking at almost $2 million. Again, about the school division will continue to pick up 1.5 million. Some of those with moderate recommended increases can be offset through there, and I share that information. Now, let's look at some revenue savings. We're looking at our governor's proposed budget, and we do have some updates from the General Assembly. We're looking at an expected increase of 2.6 million. We know that this is a tough budget year, and so there are additional discussions that will need to be had between us, with all of us in terms of how to fund some unmet needs. We have some modifications to staffing models. I did share with you that we did lose some enrollment, and it's really difficult. If you really want to be an expert on master schedules, they're really, really complicated. It's not a proportional cut when you think about enrollment, right? It's impossible. However, moderately adjusting for that, there could be a cost savings of $540,000 against simply the loss of enrollment. And also, again, I want to reassure our public that we will always stay below the SOQ recommendations and be closer to the school board recommended class averages of 19 to 1 or 21 to 1. I know folks are talking about that, and I know I may have some questions, but our goal is to make sure that we protect our teachers and our staff so they could do their work. The ISS program has been in existence now for seven months as long as I've been here. This is at the elementary level only. We do have an ISS program that will remain at the middle school and an ISS program that will remain at the high school, but at the elementary level, that, that is a cost savings of $200. Just for folks that are interested, that money's still going to be used to address discipline. It's not going to be re-appropriate for something else, but there are other critical safety positions that that money will help support. So, so that's what we're looking at, the, the difference between the county proposed and the school proposed, and I'm sure both boards are going to discuss that number. So additional recommendation, recommendation from the school board, restoring school-based per pupil allocations. We know teachers need paper, they need pencils, they need pens, markers, supplies. Our staff, we have that travel sometimes between schools, that's around $120,000 there. Testing takes PSAT, SAT, AP, those are all tests that our students get certifications will help them in college. And instructional material, $176,000 there. And that is a really small number for textbooks. $120,000 does not buy a lot of textbooks. You're talking about a $200 textbook. We have to be selective and use data to purchase whatever the greatest need shows that we need to, to purchase. Some additional requests, we know it takes funding for special education, an increase there for regional programs of 64,460. We know that assistive technology and instructional supplies for students with disability, we're recommending 38,900 in addition to what we have this year. We do have some cost savings from New Horizons of, you know, 42,848, and we want to keep that in the CTE budget. So the recommendation later is going to look small, but I'm going to ask that we consider that, that 44,889, that's actually going back into CTE because it came from CTE and we want to make sure we make those connections. So then we look at the public information officer, and I, I got to share with you that we do have a record number of FOIA requests. And just, just to share some with you, and we value that transparency, right? Our staff does it gladly. But the same person that does, you know, cybersecurity for us and keeps our network clean and safe is the same person that responds to FOIA. So when we're asking for 80 emails, 100 emails, 1,000 emails, key term or search term, then they're really, that same person's doing both jobs. And then we are, this is a legal requirement, so we need help there. And I'll also say the same thing for our administrative staff, you know, putting this board meeting together while handling FOIA requests, it's a challenge. And so we're asking for some help there, and that position would, would help with that. And I already shared the reason why for crisis communication and safety communication. We're also asking for a part-time gifted position because currently we have two teachers serving five elementary schools. So if you divide that, that's a lot of traveling. It'd be really nice if two teachers, one teacher sharing two schools rather than three. And, you know, finding a retired teacher, gifted endorsed teacher that wants to work part-time, I know they're hard to find, but we're going to try, should this be approved, so we could have, you know, serve the students. And they're not just serving gifted students, they're serving really a lot of students and improving instructional practices across the board at those schools. So we know legal fees are up, and that's just the nature of the beast, everything is up. Health services, we want to replace 11 AEDs, the, those units do age out and we would like to replace them. And then psychological services, we serve all schools, almost $8,000 there. Transportation, I share with you the reason why we're making this a priority. Every year, our bus drivers are required testing, physicals, supplies, parts, an additional $200,000 for that. Fuel costs, $133,000 for that. Preventative costs, you know, it's, it's a lot better to stay on top of things, right? We're never going to put a school bus on the road that is not in tip-top shape, 244,109. And Mr. Harley talked a little bit about preventative maintenance, you know, staying ahead of the HVAC, if we could patch those so they could last a little longer, almost $32,000 for that. And utilities, electrical, heating, water and sewer, 73,500 for that. Again, this is for, in the area of building services, 103,142. Custodial supplies, offset the ESTER, which are expiring in September. We know from wax, to wax the floors, redoing the gym floors, all those materials are expensive. Grounds, 86,500. And that is a very modest increase for software and subscription services, which are required to support instruction as well as the effective operation of school division. So I know I talked a lot, and this is a summary. And I won't spend a lot of time on this because it's already been covered, but that is the school board recommended in addition to last year, 48,72189. I have a couple more summary slides. This is the request from the local, or at least the local contribution. We recognize there are additional discussions that will occur in regards to this number, but I wanted to put it on one slide for clarity. But I do want to summarize the funding. So when it comes to federal funding, we lost $3,107,495, and that was the ESTER funds that we, we talked about earlier. State funding goes up by 2.6 million. Local, should, we know, we have additional discussion, our request is 1,513,998. And total operate, for operating is 76,261,499. And there's some information on CIP, the construction is actually in the FY '24, so you won't see it in FY '25 and as well as debt service. More information about the operating from the previous page, center of food, $5,018,000. We already talked about the half a million for CIP, and that is the total funding, that's operating plus everything else, 87,292. So these are the rates I share with the school board. You may have some questions about health insurance rates, modest increases, $12 for the employee-only plan, this is the most popular plan, 60 for employee per spouse, 21, 75 employee per children and family, 69. This will offset the increase of $2 million by almost half a million dollars, actually $449,000, give or take. I don't have that slide in front of me. And, and this will keep rates well below, I think folks are talking about what is happening. These rates will still be well below what you can find within our neighboring school divisions. And that price goes up as well for everyone. So just some information about the General Assembly, the budget is in the governor's hands. He still has a line item veto power, and so there, that can go again until May, June. But should the governor approve the way the budget is right now, we can expect some increases, but it's hard to tell right now if you follow the news. There are just, there's a lot of discussions at the state level about educational funding, but also other funding. So it's tough to build a budget on an anticipated or unrealized projections. So I believe that concludes the budget presentation. I shared a lot of information, a lot of graphs, a lot of charts, so we can inform our discussion, but I'll turn it back over to you for discussion or questions, comments, or anything else.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Bizani?
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Vlade. Very comprehensive and easy to understand. I noticed, I need some notes because I have to sit there and stretch my neck to see your slides. I said there that I had lots of information. In your slide with respect to the math scores, I know you went through kindergarten, maybe elementary and middle school, what about the high school math scores? Are they, where are we at as far as scores for them as far as where we are at?
Certainly, the high school math scores are per subject there, so math scores are aggregated for the entire school division. I presented the aggregated scores. We could break it down, we do break it down by subject area, and we could provide that information. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you. The new garage, were there any savings now because it's got a more efficient garage in place? Are there savings there that, because I know you said an increase in cost and make it spot, are there any savings associated with the new, more efficient garage?
So I, I can tell you what my observations were because I've been there about 10, 15 times. Those facilities, our staff there extremely happy with those facilities, being able to lift the bus up into the air, work on brakes. It's clean, it's organized, it's efficient. But I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Hartley, if he has any more specific information. I do not have any financials for you.
I'm just wondering, I'm not looking particular, it's a, I just wondered if you had some thoughts on that. Per pupil comparison, I said, you know, 14,000 per student in Gloucester County, that's state and local contribution?
That is correct.
And the state contribution was 8,000 per pupil? Is that the number, is that the way I should understand?
If we break down that math, if I could go through that slide, the one with the bars, I think it's one forward. So if we break down that data, and I think, you know, once this presentation is up, if we look at Gloucester, you know, we have to back subtract. So, yeah, approximately, I would tell you that. I could give you an exact number as well, but that's what it looks like to be approximately.
And then my last question on legal fees, you indicated 32,000. What does that, what does that legal fee increases comprise of?
That is a great question. So anytime to protect that division from any sort of liability because it costs a lot more to deal with it after the fact, we contract that with Lee Haney. And so if we have a question about, let's say, on a performance improvement plan, you know, are we doing things right? Or if we have a question about, let's say we have a claim about a student discipline that, you know, things, you know, may have a legal aspect of it, what we do is we're allowing counsel to make sure that we get the right advice. And that's, that's a really, it's a needed service, it's really a mandate. What we don't want to do is violate anybody's rights nor to, you know, have any legal liability that's so much more expensive to deal with later. And I would say legal costs for, as I talk with my colleagues, have gone up for everyone simply because right now, particularly after COVID, we just have more concerns. And those concerns, sometimes you end up with more of them that end up in the legal territory, and therefore those costs are naturally will go up.
So none of, does the 32,000 include any board actions that occurred last year?
I was, that's compreh, yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, we look at, there are some board matters, there are some superintendent matters, and there are student services matter. And another topic that's really very expensive, special education. We know that's a legal process, so that is a combination.
Let me answer that a little clearer because I understood his question. No, it does not.
Thank you, Doc.
I have answers for the math scores, if I may read them. All right, our, Mr. Bizani, this is for your benefit, the math scores you asked for? How did we do? Our end, of course, Algebra I last year was 91%, Algebra II was 94%, Geometry was 88%. And that's gone up since?
I'm sorry, Ms. Arson, I was juggling the microphone.
I'll repeat it, it's no problem.
Can you say that?
Sure. Algebra I, 91%. Algebra II, 94%. And geometry, 88%.
It's a high school.
High school. And a chorus.
Thank you. Much better, I was in the past.
Ms. Steele?
One correction I wanted to make with some good news that I hadn't caught the first time is in the county administrator's proposed budget, there's $595,750 for the transportation for the school buses. So it's up 95,750. It's not accounted for in that proposed budget. And then maybe not as promising, but we have a wait and see. We have a request for proposal out right now for our healthcare consultant who does all the negotiations and tries to get us better rates, and the county and the schools use the same one. We've not been very pleased with the one that we've had and feeling like they were doing enough to get us better rates. So we're going through that process, again, very, you know, very shortly we'll be doing the interviews. I don't know that it's going to help so much with this year, but you never know, and it definitely should help next year.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bizani?
If the mic is on issue, can you bring some of the other microphones from, you know, our board so that we don't have to worry about getting picked up on casual conversation with people?
And, and so, Mr. Bizani, we, there's a program and that's being implemented to upgrade all of these, and it required different equipment back there to handle more of these types of mics, so we could not bring ours. And that server, it's like one of those things that takes a long time, and I, I just got an update tonight that it's due to- an update tonight that it's due to be put in in April.
Thank you.
Dr. Worth.
So, Ms. Steele, you said you found another hundred thousand dollars that would go to the schools that would reduce the one point five to one point four million?
Right. When the schools decided to fund the sidewalk project and one of the others, there was a, there was some moving around of money from the time that I presented the capital improvement budget on its own to the time that I presented the proposed budget with the final capital figures, and that allowed that to jump up from five hundred to five ninety-five. If you recall, the request for school buses was for over a million, so it's still much short of what they needed, but it, it might provide enough for another bus. And then we're also looking at about forty thousand dollars that's in this current year, thank you, this current year that has not been, wasn't needed, and that will, we talked about having that come back to the board and have that allocated, so the five ninety-five plus the forty.
So what does that mean to reduce to one point five million requests that we have when you ask for the school board?
I'm not, I'm not sure that it is going to make that much of a difference, but it could. I think it depends upon the priority. So if the board was set with just the five hundred, and the funds that are left out are in salaries or another area, it's not going to help. But it's a good thing to have happen regardless of whether it changes the one point five million. I think for all of us, we're on pins and needles waiting to see what happens with the governor's budget versus the general assembly. The difference between what's proposed might make up, could make up, I think, the entire difference.
The only reason I ask is that we have an advertised rate of fifty-eight point three cents, right? Which is no tax increase.
That's correct. That five ninety-five is in there, and it's listed as capital, not operating, but that is with the no tax increase and the level funding of operating budget for the schools.
So we all have our work cut out if we want to try to come up with one point five million, one point four million?
I would hope it's premature to do that. I think it might be.
In terms of how, I mean, it sounds like a great budget, but you want another billion and a half, which is sound logical. You made a good, reasonable request, but given that the advertised rate's fifty-eight point three, and we can't move on that, because that's the rate that is being set. So, you know, I think it'd be interesting to see how our budget discussions will go over the next, between now and fifteen.
And, and the reason, Dr. Worth, I was saying, I think it's premature, I mean, we're, we're kind of getting this scheduling dilemma frequently, but knowing that the difference between what the House and Senate have agreed to is so dramatically different than what the governor put in, you really want to know, and it's to the better, we need to know what that is to understand what that shortage would be. And I know, I saw some social media and wanted, you know, make sure to help kind of educate the public and maybe even some of the board members to understand that our board has as a legislative agenda item every year to try to have the schools pay, as they should be, their portion of the school needs, and they have been under meeting that need. And so this is an example where they are trying to step up. Our state association, both VML and VACO lobby for this hard. They're part of the reason why these changes were made at the general assembly level. So it's putting the burden back on where it's needed and/or where it should be. That doesn't mean that there couldn't be additional funds provided locally, but we need the state to do their part, and if the state does do their part, then I'm hoping that the school's budget will be met.
I just wanted to add, as one thing for clarification, because we talk about it a lot as a board, and it doesn't untruth anything that was said, but I think it's important to remember that because of the way budgeting's worked in the last few years, the school, the superintendent slash the school board's recommended budget as is, is really, could be defined as maintaining the status quo. So you don't see any sort of discussion or recommendations in there about things that we often talk about and feel passionately about, expanding, it's maintain the current CTE programs, not expand them. It's get things back to where they were. And so even in light of that, it's still an important discussion that, you know, at some point, it would be great to get back to a discussion about what do we do as a community to take those steps involving not just maintaining the status quo. So that's just an important underlying fact of the, the whole budget itself.
Tom, Mr. Gose.
Dr. Vlade, just a quick question for you. School security. I had some constituents reach out to me and ask me about school security. Are we, is there anything, I see the compensation, understand that part, point of it, but in that process, are we doing anything to make the school security salaries more prepaid?
So with this proposed three percent, that would apply to them, so they would get an increased three percent. I think maybe the question is about doing a compensation review for those positions, given how critical they are to the school division, and looking at, you know, how much does a school security officer get paid, and are localities dear us? And so we could consider doing an out-of-cycle compensation review, and we could do that for any position, but under the proposed budget, it would be a three percent for them.
Mr. Crisco.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Again, Dr. Vlade, thank you for the information. Could you possibly email this to our board? And then the last recommendation I have is, as we're setting our calendar for next year, budget calendar, I, I think we need to look at some different dates for this meeting because I would like to have seen all of this prior to our setting of the rates. I think it has done us a disservice, not, not, not to speak negatively of anybody, but I would like to have seen more of this information prior to us setting our advertised rate. And then the last thing about, you know, every year, there's a budget decision and discussion at the general assembly level, and I think that we need to work on our calendar to be a little bit more behind that, and that's a future discussion, but I think that's what we need to look at going forward.
If, if I can, I just would like to comment, and talking to my peers across the river, we really are much earlier than they are, and I think they have pushed back because of wanting to have more information. It also helps with revenue projections to be later.
And we're not dictated by law to have these dates approved, right? We can push things back into May, can we not? But I think the part of it is you need your budget by June for setting salaries. That's where I think you are pushing the limit, because you need your whole budget for salaries sets.
Absolutely. From a retention perspective, we want our employees to have their contracts. I mean, we are guided by state law. June fifteen is a date every year that our schools must meet, and our contracts should go out before that time, so teachers can go home for the summer knowing that they have something in hand.
Ms. Steele.
I believe, and maybe Mr. Wilmot will remember, but I believe there is a code date for the school board budget that is earlier, and I wanted to say that was in May.
I think it's May fifteenth.
That's what I thought it was, May fifteenth as well. So we have to adopt at least their budget, and it would be very difficult to adopt the school's budget without adopting ours at the same time.
Right, and I'm only, I'm only suggesting a couple of weeks. I'm not suggesting a month.
A couple of weeks will make a big difference.
I think Mr. Crisco has a great idea, and I think it's something we should consider, you know, given, you know, the way we set up our standards and the advertised rate and town halls and all that, so, you know, I think I'd like to second Mr. Crisco's suggestion that next year, we, you know, try to redo the dates so that things are offered to us and to the citizens. One other question with Dr. Vlade. Compensation, how much compensation goes to teachers who advance themselves during the course, they get a master's or whatever?
That's a great question. So we do have pay lanes for masters and doctorate, but one of the things, what a lot of folks don't think about is National Board Certified Teacher Certification. Now, there's this, you know, that's also one thing, that you don't have to go get a master's, you could do that with a four-year degree. And so there's with advancement within the teaching profession, because we want, you know, teacher, you could be a teacher for thirty-plus, forty years and do a great job, so we want them to grow within their, their lane, so there is that opportunity.
So you have that budgeted for some time. Can teachers take advantage of things like that?
I don't have those numbers in front of you. National Board Certified is not very widely known about, so we need to get the word out there. In regards to the proportional BAs versus masters, generally it runs fifty, fifty or more. A lot of our teachers, most of them do have master's degrees, so they get higher on the pay scale.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's twenty-five hundred for masters.
That sounds right.
Who pays the stipend for the NBCT teachers?
Again, that's some, it's both a locality and a grant that I'm familiar with. I don't have that for our locality, but it's usually a combination of the locality as well as a, as a grant for National Board Certified. Can I ask Ms. Lucas if she has any information on that or Ms. Blankenship?
For their first year, they get five thousand, and then the following years, they get twenty-five hundred, and that's funded through the state.
So it has to come out of our budget?
Does not.
Dr. Worth.
The question with the clubs, I thought it was great, ninety-one clubs that students participate. Are there any issues with freshman sophomore that don't drive that would participate, have to get home? It's friends, parents, or are it still school buses that take kids home? And what percentage of ninety-one of the clubs is great of the twenty-two hundred students, how many students actually participate in these after-school activities?
So I'll get a little, I'll get this number ahead of my next presentation. So we're, we're establishing a baseline data. So seventy-four percent of our students for the first semester participate in one or more sports clubs or activities. We do provide activity busing and transportation for students, perhaps that do not have transportation. We know we have a number of eighth graders from our, both of our middle schools that participate in sports. I got to see some of them yesterday at the JV baseball game. We had a couple of eighth graders, were about six foot tall, then were there, so we want to increase that, and, but we do have that transportation.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Steele.
I just wanted to make a correction. I started thinking about one of the figures that Dr. Vlade had in there and just kind of double checking, and I don't want to be mis, I don't want to make a misstatement. I think if the general assembly budget goes through as is based with the recommendation, there would be another eight hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and five. There was a different figure originally that I thought we were looking at, and so this would still leave a deficit of six twenty-seven, seven ninety-three.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Vlade. Just revisiting the school security issue, we had discussed the weapons detection system and approximate cost of four to five hundred thousand. We've got three hundred thousand, or the school board has three hundred thousand to implement that program. Is there any money in this current proposed budget to meet that gap, to, to purchase or lease that system for the high school?
Not in addition to the three hundred thousand. That is, we're going to make a recommendation to the school board on some improvements, but there is no funding within this budget for additional security funds.
Has there been a decision made to pursue the weapons detection system, or are you still debating the metal detector versus the other, more advanced system?
So I'll, I'll give you the flavor of our conversation at our budget work session last week, so, and it's a great question. So we came to the agreement at the board, and Mr. Hartley mentioned it, that staff is going to go back with regards to that three hundred thousand dollars and figure out what the best, most efficient, smartest way to spend that on school security measures, that is, whether that be all weapons detection systems, all metal detectors, some combination thereof will be, and Mr. Hartley didn't like the word recommendation, that's fine, some guidance on smart plays, and then the, the board is going to soon figure out what our next steps will be after that three hundred thousand dollars. And so you've, you've hit the nail on the head, which is there is a probability, based on that conversation, that there will be a need for something greater than that three hundred thousand dollars. What that number is, we don't know right now, but it's not in this proposal, because we want to make sure we're able to explain why that number is what it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hart.
Just, just to add real quick, there's also a grant opportunity that we engage in every year, school security equipment grant. So that's up to additional three hundred thousand dollars that can be put specific to school security equipment, and then we look at other funding sources like unspent appropriations, things like that, which we think we'll discuss a little bit later this evening, but some other funding opportunities for that project in particular.
Any more questions?
Yeah, Ms. Steele, that eight eighty-six, two oh five, is that inclusive of the five ninety-five and the forty?
The five ninety-five is for capital, and I believe everything stated in the deficit of the one point five is for operating, so I think it's considered icing on the cake and not a reduction. That's the way I'm interpreting, because I don't think any of the rest of your budget included any capital outside of ours. If it did, then you could have switched it off, but I think they're separate. And the other thing, I was just, I, I know this is, again, another unknown, but the state also provides funds and little pockets here and there, so what I was just writing down is the note and hoping that that also will bring that six hundred thousand dollar difference down.
Thank you.
So it's a wait and see, a very long, frustrating wait and see.
Any more questions? All right, let's move to the next item. Discussion on unspent appropriation agreement, Mr. Anderson.
Yep, so I wanted to give a little history and clarify the record a little bit. So this will be about the third time that the two boards have discussed this. The first time was in the twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, somewhere along in there, when Mr. Records was the chair. And then the second time would have been in our March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three joint meeting. We had this resolution, which was what was included in the board packet from last year as what serves as just kind of the basis of the discussion. And just to frame it up in the current, why this is back or why we met, so during our school board retreat, we came up with a list of topics that there seemed to be consensus among the board of what were some topics that required addressing at the joint meeting level, and that this was one of the topics where the board reached consensus, that there's still a desire to come up with an efficient and effective process aimed at making progress towards meeting the fiscal needs that are tied to non-recurring essential or critical needs. And I think a synonym for that for me would be that the capital improvement plan serves to define what those needs are. And so I'll throw that out there and just turn it over for additional discussion between the two boards. We, I can say in version, there was, there was one time this was voted on in which it did not pass, and the discussion of why it did not pass was focused on it not having an upper limit or a threshold associated with it. So the next version does include that five hundred thousand dollar cap that you see in the example version from last year's joint meeting. So with that said, I'll turn it over for discussion.
So with the appropriation funds, we're asking this because, so the facility committee needs, and we listen to the concerns of things that the, that we need in the safety, road safety, the buses, the several buses replaced at this point, I think Mr. Hartley can call and tell us more in the meeting, but there are just several different, you know, monors and just maintenance equipment, and also with the deficit on the security.
Excuse me, can you move your mic closer?
Okay. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Um, there, it's a five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar appropriation is what we're asking for, whether it's just one year and then we vote on it every year, that's entirely up to the boards, but for example, this year, the needs that we have is, we have a two hundred thousand dollar deficit for security, and we have three hundred thousand dollars where we can use that and then that extra. for security, and we have three-hundred-thousand dollars where we can use that and then that extra two-hundred thousand, and we will be maybe buying buses, maybe one or two buses out of that. So the need for the appropriation for this year, I know that it's a great need, and there's so many different needs that we have, because some of these, I can say this to Hartley, could really let us know exactly what we need, but it's not something that we, as a board, have decided just to, we just need this and we're not going to use it for specific things. We aren't being transparent. We can let you know exactly what we need it for, and there are, there are large needs that we have right now. And some of them are transportation, and the other is, for example, security. That extra two-hundred-thousand dollars would help us out and make that five-hundred-thousand dollars that would help us with the hospital to put those safety thresholds in there, so.
Ms. Briscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I'm lucky enough to have been here for all of these discussions that we've had regarding this, and I'm, I'm not in favor. We've had a process in place. We've handled it every year that we've been here. Sometime in October, the schools know what their unspent funds are from the year. They have always come to us, and they've always come to us with a project in mind for those excess funds or two projects. My issue with this is every dollar that we talk about is taxpayer dollar, and for me, the process that we've used in the past has worked well. I think once, maybe twice, we did not return the funds back to the school system for one of their priority needs. But again, these are taxpayer dollars, and if there's a higher priority, I'd like to, you know, keep the ability for us to use that for the highest priority that we have across the county. But at the same time, I think ten or eleven out of the twelve times I've done this, it's all been returned back to the schools anyway, and I think our process is fine, and I don't think it, I don't think it's broken enough that we need to try to fix something.
Yeah, I think Mr. Briscoe is correct. He and I have been on the board for the same number of years and have been involved in those conversations, and I can't remember a year where we have not given the school board what they asked for in unspent funds. And it has been a system that has worked well. I think one of the issues that came up during that time period is, you know, perhaps holding the money to bank it, to have maybe more money in the next year so that they can do bigger, better things, and never really approached it, because I don't think the unspent funds have ever exceeded a large number. I think it's been anywhere from a couple hundred thousand to maybe four, five hundred thousand. And the school board does an outstanding job in balancing the budget. You always got to stay under the budget, can overspend, and I think you're very cautious in making sure that, you know, things are spent wisely. But again, as Mr. Briscoe said, we've been on the board, and it's a system that has worked well, and we always listen very carefully to the requests of the school board and understand the needs, and the priorities are the things that you come to us and you've always agreed to support that.
So, Mr. Chair, I would echo-
Mr. Brusoni.
-Dr. Orson, Mr. Briscoe's sentiment. We have a process in place. I don't, I've been on the board twelve years. I don't recall, I don't recall that we've ever not denied the school board any excess funds. I am against having a cartilage credit card saying in perpetuity that we will automatically refund the excesses back to the school, but they can all, they always come back to us. We've always given them what they asked for, so it's just as simple as I said. If they have a need and they justify the need, it's like, shoot, you know, sure, cool, pass the budget on, but I don't want to commit entire hands to lose control of any kind of savings we might get and not use it for something in cases of urgent need. So I'm not, would be against this.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Smith.
I was on the school board for twelve years, gentlemen and ladies, so I know what it's like to have to come and ask every year for unspent funds. Me, I'm for it. I don't see a reason why we can't. The school board has always been good stewards of taxpayers' money, so therefore, I mean, I am definitely in favor of it. I don't see why they would have to keep coming to us every year, over and over and over and over, and asking. If we were to see a problem, we know how to stop it, right? And we would. So, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with it. I think it's a good, I don't see it as a blank check. I don't see it as a big coverover, whatever, bedspread, whatever. I see it as something that'll be good for us working together.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly respect the opinions of those who've been on the board longer than I have, but in my relatively short tenure, we have always agreed to the request of the school board. To me, what I'm hearing on one hand is, we always agree with the school board, and we give the money back almost always, and if that's the case, then it would seem to me that the process is inefficient to have to go through this charade of the request and the return. That's going to cause delay, which is going to cost the loss, cause the loss of money, and particularly with an item like school safety, delay could mean some pretty serious consequences. And I think it really comes down to trust between the two boards, and this money has been allocated to the school board. They are all elected officials. They've all worked extremely hard in coordination with the school administration to come up with a good budget, and through their own efficiency and cost savings, they've come up with unspent funds. I think we should trust them to do the right thing with the money that's been allocated to them. So I don't see that we should go through this back and forth, when the back and forth always, almost always results in them receiving the money that's, that they've already had in their budget. So I think this is a reasonable proposal that is much more efficient and promotes trust between the two boards.
I'll retort one more time. It is not, Ms. Gibson, not a matter of trust. The board of supervisors has fiduciary responsibility for all tax dollars spent in this county. And if the schools have an excess and they have a reason for the excess and use that excess for specific reasons, I would see why we wouldn't say, okay, let's just go ahead. It's not a, it's not a long process. They come in, they explain why they need the excess. We give it to them. We give it to them. There's no controversy. There's no, it's not an issue of trust. It's just a matter of being accountable to the taxpayer. And so that's why I'm against doing this memorandum agreement, because it's simply an accountability thing. Fiduciary responsibility for the board supervisors to account. Everybody is spent in this county, whether it's allocated to the schools and the excesses or allocated on the county side and spent.
The school board has the same fiduciary duty to the taxpayer that we do. They have the duty to use the money just as wisely as we allocate it. So we share the same duty, and that's why I feel that this shell game of going back and forth with the request is an inefficient process when it inevitably results in the allocation of the same money. Let's move the process, be more efficient, let them put the money where it's needed, and really, the product of having unspent funds means they, they have saved the county money, and they want to put it where it's best used. So I think it's a good, a good proposal.
Mr. Drew.
So I have to agree with both sides. I really do. I respect all of you guys, because y'all have been doing this for a long time. However, there's a couple of things with what you guys just said about trust. I can tell you that some of my constituents, every time we come back to you guys, they're like, they look at me and go, you guys don't know how to spend your money. You're always coming back asking for more money. They don't see or understand that we actually, either they, they don't understand the process, but all they see is us coming back for more money. They're not understanding that we're giving money back basically, and it's not really they're giving you money back, they're giving you numbers back. On the second, I truly understand where you're talking about, you know? It is, we have to be, every PD needs to be accounted for. Personally, I would like to have the funds to look at these critical items, security. We've got, and if, if the minimum, I would hope, we consider using the FMRR accounts, the facility maintenance, replacement, repair accounts. Put a percentage or something like that into that, then touch it, that could offset some of the big ticket items dealing with HVAC, so on and so forth. That would be money in the bank drawing interest, I guess. I don't know how it would work, but I, every time I look at the budget, we've got an FMRR line and it's got a zero in it. So I want to be able to account for that money and be, and again, I agree with both sides. I think you're both right, and it's hard to, hard to argue both accounts. One last thing, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Brusoni.
It just popped up in my mind. The last thing is, assuming, let's assume that the M O A has passed approved, it's a transparency thing. The excess funds are there. We don't, if the M O A comes through, then the school system doesn't have to explain to us what they're going to use the excess money for. It is a transparency thing, and if we're all about transparency, the school board and the board of supervisors, we are very, like the school board, very transparent about how we spend our money. So it's a process. It's not a shell game. It's a way to account for taxpayer dollars being spent wisely and efficiently. And if the school board has a need for that money, I don't have any problem saying, I got it. I understand what you need it for. We issue a resolution and boom, it's yours. No need to, no need to have a cartilage, you know, no transparency, no, no public knowledge of what's going on with respect to spending. And so I'm in favor of keeping the current process that we have.
Ms. Anderson.
The opportunity that if an emergency arises, you know, where we have to meet separately, we can do that. If something comes up and schools, prior to that meeting, come to us, you know, we have the flexibility, you know, to get, to have a special meeting call that will help resolve the issues, but I'm still set in, you know, keeping the policy that we have it now.
Ms. Anderson.
I just have one comment on the transparency part. It's, it's not not transparent. And so, as I mentioned earlier, the, it's, the needs are clear. So we have a capital improvement plan that we approve as a board every year. We present it as part of our budget, and every year, there will be more needs than funds, which are clearly laid out in the table that Mr. Hartley provided. So the money used, if such an agreement were to be reached, would be used to make strides towards any unfunded line item on that capital plan. And those capital plans, that's the summary sheet, but there, the backside of that capital improvement plan includes pages upon pages of justification for each individual project. So it's not a transparency issue, which if it was, that could be tweaked in an agreement that said, limited to those projects included on your capital improvement plan or similar. That's a, that's a fixable issue.
Hold on. Ms. Lucas, can I ask you a question? Roughly, when do you know what your unspent funds are? September?
Typically, between September and October, once the audit is finally complete.
And historically, when have you come back to the board?
November or December.
Okay. So, I mean, historically, and I know you haven't gotten funds every year.
I won't be coming back to you next year.
But I'm, excuse me?
Correct.
But I mean, over the past years, you have, you have not gotten the funds every year that you requested?
We have not asked for them every year.
But, correct, but you haven't, the one, even, I know a couple of years you didn't get the full amount you'd requested.
Correct. But it's, I'd say that for the past several years, what we have requested is also what has been received. I think the relationship between the two boards is, is much better than it has been in the past, and that relationship has paid off.
Because where I was going with this is, you wouldn't know what your excess funds were until September, October, so you couldn't even fund them until then anyway.
Correct.
So it's not like the funds you're requesting, you're not using in July, August, September. You can't do it anyway. It would be September, October at the earliest. So all you're looking at is one or two months potentially that you're not getting funding, or getting the money back.
Correct, because, I mean, because remember with the school funding, the sales tax, our fiscal year ends June thirtieth. We don't get the final sales tax until the end of August. So we don't even get those sales tax funds in until the end of August to know, just to start to get a picture of what that balance is going to be, and then the auditors come, tell us if we need to make any adjustments. So it's, it's well into September, October before we have a clear, we have an idea, but to know that final number.
We have the same issue, as I was asked that question of this county about the sales tax, just because that's such an important part.
That delay hurts.
So we have to wait two months and choose out this graph. It's what we know. There's always that delay. And it's important, you know, because we use that and watch very carefully how the sales tax rates-
Trust me, it causes some sleepless nights until it comes in to know that we've made it.
Ms. Briscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. The last reason that I will state is, you know, the, the school board, like, like we have mentioned, is required by law to underspend their budget and then not, not get it to zero. It is the board of supervisors' duty to appropriate the funds. If, you know, that's why we're having this meeting night to discuss the appropriations for the budget. My concern in, in, in any year is there's something that goes on that's a catastrophic event. I mean, it could be any, any, any little thing, but all of a sudden, the county has a burden, and then we get to October and hey, you know what? There's, there's, let's say it's two-hundred-thousand dollars, and the county has a high need for a portion of that because, well, we might not, if we actually improve the administrator's contingency, but we could have a need where we would need that money, and if we're locked it up into this fund, it'd be, we'd have to make a special meeting to, to unlock it, and I, I don't think the, I don't think the process is, is broken enough that, that we need to fix it to, to date. And, you know, in, in a, in a perfect world, in two years from now, we'll be sitting here and everything will be coming up roses, and we won't have to worry about it. We'll be able to fund all of our, all of our processes, and the schools will be bringing back a certain amount of money, and they're just going to go, hey, here it is. This is what we have left, and this is what we need it for, like we've been doing, and I just think it's an easier process for now until we get to a point where we have a clear line of sight into what's left, what we need, and we can move forward that way.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, can I make one clarification, just to make sure for the audience listening, the sales tax that Ms. Lucas was talking about is not the sales tax that is the extra penny for capital projects. It's the normal amount of sales tax that comes for helping the operating budget. I didn't want somebody to think, why are they talking about that sales tax money?
And so another reason for keeping the current process is, if the school board came back and says, we have an extra three-hundred-thousand dollars, and we'd like to create an FMRR account for that, I have no problem with that, but I don't want to tie our hands either. So you come up with a reasonable request, we do the process, we approve it, because I don't recall ever taking money from the schools for excess. I don't recall it in my twelve years, but I'm not missing two, one or two of them for whatever reason they might be. I'm going to be sixty-nine years old. I could lose one memory a little bit, but I don't recall doing that. I'm totally in favor of allowing the schools to keep their excess, but I don't want to tie the board of supervisors' hands with respect to transparency and ability to spend that money, which is best used for what the taxpayer needs. But again, the school board, come up to us, FMRR, or whatever need you might explain, or delineate or detail for us. It's approved. I approve it, but I don't have any issues with it. Just don't want it to be tied. My hands tied.
So I can close this out from our end, saying that I checked my box, or our box, which is that the board felt like it was worth additional discussion. We've had additional discussion, and we won't suggest it for another joint session agenda unless something changes in the future. And like Mr. Drew, I can, I can, while I don't agree with all the reasons, I can respect them, and Ashley's summary, it reflects reality. So I won't call it not broke, but it's, it's efficient. It could be efficienter, and so we appreciate the conversation as a board on the topic. So unless anybody else wanted to add anything to that, we can move on to E. I don't know, Ms. Scruggs feels like she's looking at me. Do you want to say something before we move on to E?
Can I be transparent and ask for one-point-five million dollars? I, I mean, I just, if we're looking at long-term growth and we are status quo at this point, how are we ever expected to grow our schools if we cannot take the allocated funds that have already been allocated for us and use them as we feel necessary? Our teachers are coming out of pocket for expenses. I got an email recently from a teacher that needed pencils for her classroom. You know what I did? I went on Amazon and bought twelve-hundred pencils, and I delivered them to that school. It's sixty dollars, that box of pencils, that were already sharpened. If the money has been allocated for us because we have saved, why can't we continue to use those funds?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Solomon.
Ms. Solomon.
Do we not have, are we not losing some educators and some of our students? Do we not have, are we not losing some educators in some of our schools? In other words, um, a constituent did email me in reference to Body Top Elementary, losing two positions. So you're taking a fourth grade class that from kindergarten up have had their nineteen to one. Um, now their classes are going to grow because they're going to lose a fifth grade teacher next year.
Shit. Keep going. Sorry. I, I think it's important though, for the context of this discussion, to draw the line between recurring costs like teacher salaries and the focus of this agreement. Nothing, nothing you're saying is wrong or untrue, both Ms. Scruggs, but the conversation focused on this particular agenda item is for one-time, non-recurring costs, which wouldn't help us. That, that part of the discussion for both is more of a previous topic of what's the right answer from a general operational budget perspective versus how do we treat unspent appropriations? Cause even with that agreement signed, if such existed, we wouldn't be using that to pay for something that's going to recur like a salary. I just want to make that clear because it can convolute the discussion a little bit. But yeah, I mean, and that, that, that ties back to the whole previous presentation is yes, that, the budget comes at a cost of losing people.
And, and thank you for sharing that. So it is a staffing formula, right? I think you lose twenty students, you generally lose a teacher. You gain twenty students, you get, and so I've, I've sort of, um, did go there. I did talk with the principal. I did address that. I think there's some misinformation being shared. We're always going to stay below the SOQs and closer to the board recommendation of, you know, nineteen to twenty-one to one as an average. Uh, but we also cannot continue to just allot a certain number of positions regardless of what happens to the school enrollment. I think that, you know, and think, talking about the other needs the school division has, we talked about school buses. We talked about transportation budgets. We talked about school safety. And the assumption that we're going to keep the same number of positions with no regard to ratios, uh, with declining enrollment, I think it's worth having some specific conversation. Um, and we'll always monitor those numbers. What I'm saying to our public and our principals, when you scare, get our students, enroll them. And we monitor those numbers and adjust accordingly.
Dr. Orff.
Do we know how much teachers actually spend per year out of their own pocket? I know my wife taught for many years here and I know what she wants. Uh, and I know that goes on today. Do we have an accounting of that? Because that would be an interesting number for people to see what our own teachers put out of their pocket.
So there, there are, there is funding and I'm going to have Ms. Lucas, if she could come back up. We have per pupil allocations. So we think about the number of students that we have and there's a certain amount that is allotted to that. Ms. Lucas, can you share some information about per pupil allocations?
I can share a little bit. I have no idea what, what you're asking for as far as knowing. I think that's something that information could be collected and we could gather that to see how much they're actually paying for out of pocket, um, because they all do. I, I'd say it averages around 150 to 200 dollars that teachers are allotted to spend for classroom materials. Um, and then there's other funds within the school, PTAs, PTOs typically also donate funds that they use. So it's, it's coming from a variety of sources, but I, I think the information you're asking, I, I don't have it. I, I, we haven't collected that, but I think it could be collected.
Well, but we have, I mean, maybe we could ask if there wasn't a retired teacher, recently retired teacher that's on the school board. Maybe Ms. Arsenovich could answer that.
Um, when I was teaching, we did not get, if I recall, we didn't get anything from the school. We got it from the PTA. And I think we got like 30 or 40 dollars, which was lovely. We really appreciated it, but we were not getting anything from the schools.
But what were you paying out of pocket roughly?
Oh, what was I paying out of pocket? Um, I'm a reading specialist, so my costs weren't the same as a classroom teacher's. So.
So, so I will say that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is like a, for me personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. This is a super convoluted topic because it gets into preference desires that are outside of the purview of the school board. And I want to be clear when I say that I appreciate any teacher who spends their own money on a classroom. But in a perfect world, I would love to have a policy that says thou shalt spend zero dollars of your own money on your classroom because, and again, it comes with much appreciation, but it's just that if you were to actually collect that number, it would be zero to a thousand. And the, and, and trying to get to the root cause of why that some are zero and some are a thousand gets into things that are just outside the purview of the school system. And so I just, this is a conversation where I, I think the focus of the conversation should be restoring the funds in the line item presented in the recommended budget. They get back to making it a school provided that minimizes, reduces, or eliminates the need for a teacher to feel like they have to spend money out of their pocket. That's where the focus of the conversation should be.
I like a caveat on that too. We've got parents, we have parents spending their own money too for the kids. Uh, some of the TTE, um, shampoo for the cosmetology shop, you know? I bought them rubber gloves because they didn't have them. I bought the, the loot shop scrap wood from Lowe's just so they could do what they've got to do. And it's about the kids. I don't care about the money. But it's about the kids. And if we keep shortchanging, and I know that may not be the right words, but I think it's a disservice if we don't give these teachers what they need to teach these kids and, and stop beating up the parents for money and beating up our teachers for money.
Mr. Cozey.
I know we may have teachers watching and give you a specific example. So I'm, I'm in a school, we have these robots. We want kids to code. Right? The, you know, robots programmable, coding is important, particularly at the middle school, elementary level. And so, you know, I talked to the teachers like, oh, we were lacking the, um, you know, subscription because the coding requires a subscription. She reaches out to her principal. We reached out to IT and we funded. Part of this is also requesting. We certainly want to limit the number of purchases out of hand. If that teacher reached out to us about pencils to the division and the principal, we would have bought them. So I do think I want to sort of, as teachers are facing these critical needs, um, to feel free to reach out to the principal first. And then we'll move it up the chain to make sure that we fund those critical, um, supplies. Actually, again, I would be remiss if I didn't share that and welcome our teachers in making these requests.
Mr. Cozey.
Dr. Orff, I will tell you from my home, it's several hundred dollars a year. We've got two teachers that live under my roof and both of us have spent money out of our own pocket to take care of our students. So it's several hundred dollars a year that we all spend. So I will tell you that it was somewhere around three hundred, three hundred and fifty last year. Um, so that gives you some idea. Um, I want to go back for a second, just for a clarification for myself. Um, because I just waited everybody out. So we have this, so, so let me go back for a second. If we go up to school board, you, you, you have full control over your excess funds. What happens, uh, just for thought, what would happen if the board of supervisors needed that money? Cause as it stands right now, they don't, they, it sounds to me, and I'm, I'm new to it, I'll tell you. But they don't deny any request you've made. If you, and, and I support either way. I'm like Mr. Drew. I see both sides. But if you have access to that extra, those extra funds, and we as a board need those extra funds to take care of the catastrophic event in the county, how do we get those funds? Just something to think about.
Ms. Steele.
Well, just, uh, the, the funds automatically go back to the general fund and, and, and so they're in the fund balance. And then they could be re-appropriated in a number of different ways or left into fund balance.
Dr. Orff.
Yeah. And, you know, we discussed last time, you know, Mr. Crisco brought this up. But for example, if there was an emergency at Body Top where you needed HVAC, you know, we have our fund balance equation goes fourteen, sixteen percent. And I think Mr. Crisco, uh, at that time brought up, well, you know, we could drop it percent, you know, if we had to go to fifteen, we'd give you that million plus for that. So, you know, we have some flexibility if a dire emergency arose where you needed that million plus for the HVAC, you know, we could do it.
Correct. But that is just one-time money. I don't want anybody to think that we can dip into it and be 1.3 forever. It's, it's one-time money.
Anyone else on this? Okay. Next is a presentation of the summary of human resources departure data.
So as Ms. Blankenship makes her way up here, I'll frame this one up too. So this was another topic that came up at our retreat when we met early in February. And so as reflected in one of Dr. Vladu's slides, several of them, uh, this is all tied to the theory of keeping, attracting and retaining top quality teachers. And so we know teachers are leaving. We know they leave for a variety of reasons. Um, a lot of those reasons are outside of our control. And in the context of my comments now, our equals like the collective Gloucester County people involved in the process. So that we know that some of these are outside, some of these are within our control. And so presenting this information tonight is kind of just our, our, trying to paint a picture of the things that we do know as a school board of why some of these teachers are leaving and how they fit into the overall decision-making, um, process within Gloucester itself. And so I'll stop there and let Ms. Blankenship present some actual numbers. And the, the goal here is to make sure that we're, we're focused on things that help us attract and retain top quality people within our school system.
Sure. So this is just two quick slides for you tonight. This first one is our 2223 turnover data. So point in time at the end of that school year capturing the reasons for turnover. This is the information that we report um, to the state each year. And so this will be reported again at the completion of the school year. So just to give you an idea of some of the top reasons why people exit the school system. Certainly we've had more exits over the past four years than in previous years. And we have talked before that we're, we're also in a, a retirement cycle. So for the past four or five years, we have seen our tenured, um, teacher start to retire. Um, I reported, I think last year it was a little bit more than 30% of our teaching staff that had gotten close to or were nearing that retirement age. And so we're really still falling in that bucket now. And, and retirement is starting to just look a lot more nice after COVID. So, um, you can see that retirement was kind of that second one at the top this year. Family considerations really can be anything, but sometimes that involves, um, both relocation for a family reason or just simply relocation. But traditionally, people are, um, exiting the school system for some reason and protect, in most cases, not going back to work. So that's typically what you're finding on that first line item. And then our second one, our third one, relocation. Um, we're in a transient area, really close to the military bases. That's certainly going to be natural and it happens quite often in Gloucester. So that's not new to us. Um, and then they kind of trickle down from there. Things that we want to just make sure that we continue to consider that you've seen in your budget package, maintaining our, our compensation packages. We've been able to aggressively propel compensation in the past few years. And that's really helped with, um, retention of current teachers and quite frankly, being, bringing teachers back. So teachers that have transitioned out of the school district, we have seen a return of those teachers to the school district. We have had some trouble with, um, with bringing teachers in, um, from other areas where they have to relocate here and then being able to find housing in Gloucester County. That's just simply been a challenge in the past few years. Uh, we have found that if you live here and work here, usually we can hold on to you just a little bit longer. So we'd love to see, um, teachers that are incoming from other areas certainly, um, take up residence in Gloucester County. And this is our vacancy rate. Dr. Vladu touched on this in his budget presentation, just to give you an idea of how we compare. So starting from the left, that's the state of Virginia, and then trickling down to the right, that is Gloucester. You can see we've done very well. So this is your vacancy data as of October 1st of the year that you're in. So that's why it includes January, or that is why it includes 2023 and 2024. Um, we have fared very well at the start of each school year over the past few years as compared to the state and those regions around us. So we're very proud of those numbers. Hope to be able to continue to do so. Um, takes a lot of work to, to make it happen, but, um, but certainly very proud of the community that we live in and what we're able to attract to, to come to Gloucester. That just means that at the start of the school year, we have far less positions open and vacant with, um, without teachers than other localities. Considering Virginia started with about 3,500 vacant teaching positions this school year.
Mr. Crisco. Those are percentages, correct, that we're seeing?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a question in reference to all this together. With your proposed budget, we're laying off or not renewing contracts of a considerable number of employees that we didn't go over earlier. Where will that put the vacancy rate for the schools?
All right. So those positions would go away. So those, those FTEs that are allotted would be eliminated. Those positions would be eliminated. So they would not show as unfilled positions going into next year.
But what is the total number of positions that we're thinking about, or you're thinking about not renewing?
Those, those would be the ESAR-funded positions. I don't know what the total number landed at. Um, we had 24 total positions. Um, some are being retained in different ways. So there were security officer positions in there that we're, we're looking for grant funding for those. So there is a handful that, um, that do get retained in other ways, but.
And other than the? And other than the fifth grade teacher at Body Top, how many other teaching positions aren't renewed?
So we, we do in our staffing model have, um, have some expected, um, removal of positions through attrition only. And so certainly not, not renewed.
I'm not talking.
So I think it's.
I'm talking reduction in.
Six positions.
Positions.
Six positions in the, in, six positions, teaching positions that in our staffing budget, um, we would need to reduce by based on our student count.
And what grade levels?
Uh, they vary. Um, the, the, the principals do have some autonomy on how they do that. Um, so it's, it's more of a positions per building that we would expect them to come down. We would have identified positions in which, um, based on their head count, their student count, let's say the fifth grade, for example, they could come down by a fifth grade teacher. Principal does have some discretion to say, I'd actually rather have potentially higher numbers in a kindergarten class than in a fifth grade class because there's two adults in kindergarten and they can kind of make that determination based on their population.
So we're losing six teachers right now.
Six positions.
I'm asking teacher specific.
We don't have any teacher slated to lose their position, to lose their job. Through natural attrition in the school system, we would place them elsewhere.
How many teaching, how many classroom teachers are we expected to not have next year that we have this year?
So if I'm answering that correctly, it would be six.
So we're back at six.
We are at six. So, but I just want to make sure that the audience watching the TV understands we're not eliminating those six people.
I know we're going to have retirement. We're going to have other thing else.
Correct.
But throughout the school division, there are six teaching positions that are, we're doing away with.
That we have proposed to reduce by. Correct.
Okay. Mr. Anderson.
That's all I had. Unless anybody had questions, we've met the intent of agenda item E. Thank you, Ms. Blankenship.
Thank you. Dr. Vladu, school culture.
Thank you. And, um, this is my second presentation, uh, tonight, and it's another controversial topic, so to speak, because I think we all have our views on discipline. And before I start this presentation, as it's coming up, um, I want to just sort of provide some context, right? I think too often we don't have the backstory to the backstory. So I want to speak specifically, if we could, um, to our teachers. It is their responsibility and they're doing a great job in enforcing the student code of conduct. Our school board approves the code of conduct every year. That code of conduct is based on state law and best practices. And then teachers and principals do their best job to enforce it. So I think as we're having this discussion, I don't want to come across that we are, um, I do not want to impact the teacher's ability to manage their own class. That is a sacred thing that is protected by law. So, and when we're saying, well,. So when we're saying, well, let's reduce discipline, what some may hear is like, what, you don't want me to write students up? And that is not what we're saying. What we're saying, let's have some discussions based on data because our community has made school discipline a priority. And by the way, when I watched the video from this board meeting last year, school discipline was a topic. And it seemed to have been a topic for a long time. We know that choices have consequences and that we know that, you know, in life, throughout life. So I think when there's a, you know, a rule or violation of a code of conduct, the easy thing to do, I would say, is to not do anything about it. The hard thing to do is to have a hard conversation, to involve parents, to communicate that and to establish clear expectations. That takes work. And so again, I think it's important to have that distinction. We also know that teachers and schools have responsibility with school discipline, but so do our parents. And I think we heard a lot of information of our parents, it's a partnership. I think oftentimes, we put too much in one place or other. It is a true partnership. Again, as a teacher, I would contact, I did contact all my students and their parents at the beginning of this year. I said, thank you so much for having your child in my class. I'm looking forward to working together this year. So that way, when I did make the call the second time around, I already had a relationship with that parent. That really worked. So there's some practices, I think, that schools and teachers can do to impact, not eliminate, but impact. This is not just a topic for the school board and the board of supervisors. Our community is interested in this topic and I gladly will elaborate on it. And the other thing I would want us to be reflective, all of us, if you think, no, please don't answer here. If you think back to your teenage years, you may have used the word that was inappropriate at that point. It may have been a conversation. Today, it's a referral. And so it has changed. So I think we want to use our experience in K-12 and try to apply it to this. And it's, it's a different world and it's a different context because, you know, just think about a conversation we had on safety. Imagine that conversation 20 years ago would be very, very different. We also have to understand child development, right? We all grow up and we learn from mistakes. And we're doing a lot of learning. There's all of those discipline issues, all those incidents, there's a lesson in there. There's a conversation there. There's teaching there. So again, what I'm asking our community, I ask everybody is not to be so quick to pass judgment, but actually to seek to understand this issue because it is extremely complicated. Now to some data. I shared this with you in regards to discipline being a high topic of interest for everyone. And it was also in the superintendent's search. And I think that data seriously, when back last May, that information was public, the survey. And in, in that survey, folks are very, very interested in discipline. So this information that is going to come before you comes from a very reliable source, which is the Virginia Department of Education. Every school division reports on these incidents. We're required to report on, on discipline and discipline incidents. So anybody can pull this data, it's not subjective, it's objective because it's available to pull for everyone. And then all of these are hyperlinked. If you, you know, if you had any more questions about where to pull this data. We know that if we, earlier, you asked about the mathematics data, that's available in the same place on the school quality profile. So when we look at standard of accreditation behaviors, if you wonder what those are, it's everything. It's everything that, you know, you know, all ranging from a minor infraction all the way to a safety infraction. So we report on everything under those categories. Now to some bar graphs. So let's look at context, right? We all need context. When we look at standard of accreditation infractions, which are published on the Virginia Department of Education, and when adjusted for population size, these are the same school division I shared with you earlier in terms of the budget. Semi-rural, we do have a high incident or high reporting. Again, that is a distinction between incidents and reporting those incidents. And I'll explain more into that. So comparatively speaking, yes, we're a little higher, somewhat higher than our market, our comparative market when it comes to the budget. So then I say, well, what if we were to compare our neighbors and to adjust for population size? Well, that's what it would look like. For instance, you may have WJCC is approximately a little bit twice as high as we are. So that number is adjusted accordingly with a factor. And so we do have a higher incident rate than these localities. So that is to some context, but I want to share with you some positive news tonight because that's what folks are interested in. How do we fix it? So we have two examples I'm going to share with you. Well, one, we need to be thorough and deliberate about figuring out what's, you know, this multi-dimensional problem. So, you know, our teams, we're involving parents, we're involving principals, we're involving teachers, we're involving actually students. Like we need to see the issue. And this is a process that we, we are all trained in and with at least two members from the county. And using the Trager process, which really analyzes complex issues. It defines them because if you misdiagnose the problem, then the solution is going to be not appropriate. So it's very important that we invest the time in understanding what is happening with school discipline. So stating the issues, what is the situation we need to examine? What do we mean by that? Assessing the priorities. What do we want to focus on? Is it growing? Is it staying the same? Is it declining? And then next, identify next steps. So those meetings are happening. There is a superintendent's task force on discipline that these groups are examining the situation and actually making recommendation, recommendations for improvement. I know that we just had a principal's meeting, we did a deep data dive. And so we are on this topic. However, it is complicated. Positive examples. We have the solution to addressing this. And this is Petsworth Elementary. I'm going to share with you an elementary example and a secondary example. So if you're looking at the bottom line, bottom graph or bottom bar, 2223, that was last year. Last year, 91% of students at Petsworth did not have anything. 6% had one day. That was both ISS or OSS, which is in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. And 3% had two or more days. Well, look what happened in the course of the year. The number of students who know disciplinary referrals went up to 93. The number of students with one day was reduced by a third from six to four, and that's a huge increase. It doesn't look like a lot, but it's a huge increase. And while two-plus stayed the same, we consider that to be significant. And here's why. If you're looking at the total number of days spent out in ISS or OSS, we went from 82 and 1/4 days. And we did count this 8/4 days. We counted it all because we were by the book and we enter everything. And we reduced that to 4829. What is this? This compares first semester last year with first semester this year. So the year's not over. So to me, what a positive example of actually significantly addressing school discipline in a way that's dignified. It's effective and it feels good to be a school. And so here's what the principal there, Ms. Melissa Miggis and her staff did. And they came before the school board meeting back in October with a wonderful presentation with students who were excited about the house system. If you go to Petsworth, if you walk in line, if you respect your teacher, you earn beads. And there's a competition between the different houses. And if you earn a certain amount of beads, then you get a, you know, to eat lunch in the classroom where you get to go on a field trip. And so there's a reward system to reward the character values that are particularly important, the character building. Service, things that are bigger than ourselves, engaging parents from the breakfast, Veterans Day breakfast. All of our schools have done that. And also all-pro dad. You want to see a great day where fathers are hugging their daughters or sons before school starts? That makes for a good day. And student leadership, our students have a lot to say. And staff morale and working conditions, we have to tend to our teachers and our staff. So not only does it feel better, it looks better in the data. And I, you know, if you were at Petsworth and you did principal for a day, and I think that was you, Ms. Solomon, it is an awesome place to be. It feels good, it's positive, it's warm, it's inviting. And the moment you walk through that door, you feel it. And that is a huge change from, I would say, just a couple of years ago and as you saw by the data. So again, we have the conditions and we have the answers to solving, solving some of those challenges. So now to the other example, at the high school. And we know it's very, very important to address behaviors because we want to be proactive, right? You don't want to be reactive, you want to be proactive in most cases. So last year, bottom bar, 78% of students did not have ISS, in-school suspension or OSS. 7% of students had approximately a day and 15% had two or more. And again, first semester with first semester, apples to apples. So we're looking at this year, 87% of students did not have OSS or ISS. 6% had one day. And the number of students with two-plus, we're talking about two-plus means 10 days, 15 days, it could be a lot. That was reduced in half. And so here's what it looks like. Statistically, that's significant. Well, here's the other thing that makes me more happy is listening to the kids, listening to the students, that it feels better at the high school. It's positive. We love our teachers. We love being, you know, the cafeterias, they feel great, their supervision. And so they're tangible things, but the students have positively shared, and I met with them, that it is a positive place to be. It's not perfect. No school is perfect, but it's, you know, we are making significant progress in that regard. And again, I want to commend Dr. Miggis and his staff for doing a great job with that. So what do we attribute those changes to, positive changes to? Well, teacher visibility. If you go to the high school today, we visit it after school hours. But if we were to go at 11:00 AM, you would have seen that teachers are part of the team. They're assisting with discipline in the common areas. They're assisting with supervision in the common areas. And we want to thank them for that because you're most, less likely to do something in the presence of a staff member than you are if there's no one in the hallway. Administrative supervision. Parent engagement, again, from the all-pro dad breakfast to, and there's a group right there. And I want to commend Mr. Edward Washington, the all-pro dad organization, because that is happening in all of our schools. I met with the students and they provided me with a lot of information on discipline. They said it feels better this year. But they also said that we got to work on improving consistency. I'm a father of two girls. If I wasn't consistent with one or the other, oh my gosh, I think every parent here can relate to that. If I said yes now, but I would say no tomorrow, if my wife said yes and I would say no, it was on. Multiply that by 100. So consistency of discipline across the school is extremely important. And we are part, we have an answer to addressing that. Positive referrals, over 400 positive referrals. You don't call because it's a bad, it's bad news. You call, I caught your son or daughter, do something positive. How cool is that as a parent to get that call? And now I come back to school and I want more of that. And then it's also important, when you write something on a bathroom wall, that we find out who it is and apply the discipline. Now, if we can investigate and we're not following up, we're more likely to do it. So the students said that we do a better job with investigation, a better job at getting to the bottom of things and addressing what's going on. So again, I want to commend the high school staff, teachers, security, administration, because they have made a phenomenal improvement in the lives of kids. And that's what they did. I mean, we could talk about data here what we want, but these are results for the students and their experience. So I know this is a question, Dr. Worth, we started that conversation last time. It's so important that this is a metric or key performance indicator. And I wish I had more pictures on this slide because I could fill it all. But the more sports clubs activities that we have and the more student involvement we have, the stronger culture we have. And it helps everything from school safety to discipline to improving behavior. And I'm extremely proud of our staff for not only coaching these sports or being involved with this, but actually increasing the opportunities for students. So again, I want to commend those programs because learning doesn't just stop at the classroom.
Can we get listed those? I'd be curious. I know the sports club, but there's also arts and all those other things. Be interesting to see the participation in non-athletic sports because not everyone's an athlete.
Yep. And that's a great point. So that, that 1115.
What I could be doing, but it's, it's buying now. So I commend the, the staff of all of our schools, but especially that building. Because there's a lot of bodies and there's a lot of things going on. But we, but the, the staff and students, we're working together, we're all bought, bought in. And the kids, you're right, they say, Mr. Tony, it's a better place than it was two years ago, you know? And even the students who aren't, and that's what I want to just leave you with. Even the students who maybe they don't want to do anything, maybe they just come to school because mom said I had to come to school. They will come in your class and say, I'm still not going to do nothing, but I'm not going to disrupt you. So I'm going to sit over here and I might, I'm just telling you, I may halfway listen. And before you know it, that, that, that student that didn't want to be there, they start listening.
Yeah.
And before you know it, they start participating. And, and so things are changing. I can only speak for Gloucester High School, but things are changing there. And it starts with all of us being on the same page.
I think you summarized this presentation where I summarized your presentation. You're right on point.
Dr. Vladu, I've heard a lot of positive things about how you're managing the school system. From parents who are, from, you know, have children in high school, from parents who are in middle school. And I have to commend you for the things that you put in place to do the things that you're doing here to improve and improve the conditions for students there and teachers there. And so I commend you for all that. Thank you.
And thank you. I got to actually go back to it's, you know, our, our teachers are just plain amazing. Let me give you just an example. If you haven't thought before, a lot of us think it's really hard work to be responsible for 25 souls for the every need. I carry a rucksack on my back in the military. And I, when I got out, it got heavier. I wish that was easy, carrying 70 pounds on my back everywhere I went. Because we care about our students so much. You know, we would sleep at night over this. We don't let it go. And so I think the commitment of teachers and staff makes Gloucester an extremely special place. With that, what are some best practices? What are some low-hanging fruit? And then you just described a lot of those that we can all work together and the students are the key part of this. Student leadership, there's so much potential there because if 95% of students actually don't have referrals, guess what happens to the other 5%? They start coming in and responding positively to their peers. So it's not just about teachers, it's about all of us working together and taking responsibility for it. So thank you for those comments. I'll defer to teachers and staff who do the hard work.
Any more questions on this topic? Is there, are there any other matters, issues we'd like to discuss tonight?
I want to add one more piece.
Yes, sir.
Just one more piece. That, that impresses me and I think that it boos everybody at this table in the public to know. We've got a construction project going on, our building, and it ain't slowing our students down none. And the respect that they show to those construction workers who are trying to do their job. Nobody, everybody's working together. And I, it sounded like they were molding above my room the other day. My kids were like, Mr. Tony, we can hear you and we, we can hear you and it's okay. Because when they get done, this will be a better place. And so I, I just, I'm impressed by the way that they, they're adapting to an ever-changing. You never know what's going to happen from day to day with the construction project, but it doesn't seem to really affect our student population.
All right. Any other discussion or anything?
I have one announcement, and I didn't want to do it at the beginning to bring y'all down. But for our counterparts of the board of supervisors, just in case you haven't seen the communications. But this was your last joint meeting with the presence of Ms. Heather Lucas and Ms. Rachel Blankenship. And so I wanted to offer y'all the opportunity to offer any. to offer any words, but Ms. Lucas is going to enjoy some much-needed retirement, and Ms. Blankenship is moving on to some other endeavors, but they're two incredibly important positions that we've had the pleasure of having some great people in, and I know y'all get to, really only get to interact like this on a twice-a-year basis, but just wanted to pass that along.
Anything else? To, to, to speak to what Mr. Anderson said, I'm happy for y'all. Someone's going to have some shoes to fill, we're going to miss you guys. And Thursday night, town hall meeting here at 6:00, going over the budget. With that, there's only one, I'll let you do it first. I'm doing it first tonight. With that, there's only one other item on our agenda. All in favor? We're adjourned.
We could also, also entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion from Mr. Sennett, a second from Mr. Drew, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we're adjourned as well.